Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight for our monthly business meeting of the Mayor and Commission of the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County. We appreciate you having an interest in and caring enough to be here with us. We also will have an executive session at the end of this meeting. If you have an, if you'd like to have an agenda to follow along with us, they're on the table to the right of the doors, just outside in the hall, and those at home can follow along with, or can get an agenda through athens-clarkcounty.com. If you have an electronic device, I ask that you please turn it off or to silent. Ms. Bratton, will you call the roll, please?
Dickerson, here.
Sam.
Here.
Link.
Here.
Wright.
Present.
Bailey.
Present.
Neesmith.
Present.
Vale.
Here.
Harrod.
Present.
Gertz.
Here.
Tamby.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 5th?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any written communications, Ms. Bratton?
For entering to the record, we have notification from Transportation and Public Works Director, David Clark, of acceptance of Streets for Anna's Walk.
Thank you. There'll be several opportunities tonight for public input, and as each of those opportunities come up, I will let you know so you'll know when it's time for you to come to the podium if you, if you want to talk to us. The rules of our commission allow each speaker three minutes. There's a timing device on Ms. Bratton's, a timing light here on Ms. Bratton's desk. It will, it will be, start out at green, it will become yellow when you've got a half minute left, and please have your comments finished by the time it turns red so that I won't need to interrupt you. And at this time, we will, we will go to our consent agenda, comments on our consent agenda, which are items one through 12. Anyone who would like to speak to one of those items, this would be the time to come. Let us know which item you're speaking to and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Sidney Bakas, PO Box 174, Athens, Georgia. I'm here to speak tonight on Consent Agenda Items Number Three and Number 10. Item number three requests authorization for additional expenditures of about $7 million from SPOLOST 2011 funds for projects for the jail. And I have in the past expressed my concerns over expenditure of 2011 SPOLOST funds without the addressing of the Lexington Road dump problems that I have continued to request that sustainable energy SPOLOST 2011 funds be used to construct anaerobic digesters, to use the sludge as sustainable energy, and that has yet to appear as an agenda item. So I am requesting that item three be removed from the agenda. Item number 10 shows a total of $497,000 as the total available management plan funds for watersheds to supposedly implement watershed protection plans, develop, provide, and maintain environmentally sensitive infrastructure systems, and preserve water resources through practical conservation and other methods. And I'm here to remind you that the Lexington Road dump is proposed for expansion. It would, by staff's own concession, capture all groundwater and surface water that currently is flowing into the tributary to the Upper Oconee River, and it would both contaminate that water and remove it from the river, which would reduce the amount of water in addition to increase the contamination of that water. So I am requesting that that money be diverted to resolving the problems at the dump, which are currently affecting that watershed that has not been addressed. I have sent you an electronic copy of my comments that addresses tho, that addresses those problems in more detail, and I request that you look at those comments to look at the other problems associated with the watershed protection. And I will again, at the end of the meeting, give you a written copy for the record. Thank you.
Any further citizen comments on items one through 12?
Hello, I'm Claude Burnett. I live at 145 Homestead Drive. I'm the local district health director, and I'm here on behalf of the Board of Health to support health and safety on our sidewalks and roads and regarding traffic management. I recently was surprised to learn that half of all adults in the United States have high blood sugar, and in my opinion, one of the key reasons for that is we eat too much sugar and starch. But another important factor is exercise, and we need opportunities to safely walk, jog, and bike in our communities. So occasionally, I've been a biker, and I've gone along Cedar Shoals Drive where there's a nice bike path, and I was surprised to learn that I could ride along there comfortably with the traffic coming from behind, until I got to Gaines School Road, which had no bike path. And then another bike path resumed on Barnett Shoals, and then you could go down research. But if I wanted to go to town, I had to go across the bridge on College Station, which I'm delighted that you all are fixing, hopefully to have also a bike path. So it's great to have a bike path, but if it's intermittent, it exposes you to serious risk of injury, and so I strongly recommend that we find some way to make a continuous path to a meaningful place rather than just small segments. And so I strongly support your efforts that, to improve access and opportunities for exercise, but I think we could improve on the way we do it, hopefully. I know it's expensive and difficult, but that's what I wanted to recommend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burnett. Anyone else wish to address the commission?
Yes, good evening. My name's James Gray. My address is 340 Richard Way, Athens, Georgia, 30605. I'm the chairman of the Board of Health. I also want to address, follow up on Mr. Perdett's comments. I myself used to ride a bike 10 years ago, believe it or not, by my size now. I gained 80-some pounds when I stopped, and one of the reasons I stopped was Richard Way feeds the Barnett Shoals and comes down College Station, and I was an employee and am an employee of Athens Regional. So I would leave early in the morning, and coming down College Station, which you all have now started to improve, became a very dangerous proposition for that. I had two small children at the time, so I abandoned the bike ride. But it was an easy bike ride for me to get to work, even at, you know, at 50 years old. So I'm here to support also any infrastructure for both pedestrian and bicycling that can be done additionally. I think you have a letter referring to Georgia Bike, having put us in a project, we're one of 16 towns, that they're helping to advise in this condition, so I just wanted to make the commission aware of that also, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. And I need to make sure that the, that our audience understands, this is the time for comment on items that are one through 12, and any item, anything anybody wants to talk about will be the last comment period at the end of the meeting, but until then, we need to address specific items on the agenda. So would anyone like to speak to item one through 12?
My name is Josh Wayne, 361 East Clayton Street, Athens, Georgia, 30601, and I'm here to speak about the jail expansion bill, construction contract change order number seven. Yeah, so in these, in the past, these orders have sometimes been for unforeseen site changes, and I wonder why we spend a couple hundred thousand dollars every so often expanding our jails when we know that Georgia arrests more people per capita of any other state in the whole world. I don't see why this money couldn't go to a gardening program, an education program. I mean, why are we spending so much money on jails where, in the late, low 40s in education, I mean, and it kind of shows because they just keep coming back and they keep asking for money. I'm sure they've gotten a few million dollars just on these, these orders, and unforeseen expenses of hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, what about the expenses at schools that are not taken care of? I can't believe that we prioritize jails over education. So please think about that when you vote for another one of these. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Way. Anyone else wish to address some items one through 12? Okay, seen none, we'll come behind the rail. Is there any commissioner who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Ms. Link?
I'll remove number 11, and also number three, just so we can answer the gentleman's concerns about the jail expansion project.
Anyone else? Okay.
May I move for the adoption of consent agenda minus numbers three and 11?
Thank you. Before we do that, would you read in ordinance, of course, Mr. Bearman?
In ordinance to amend the 2016 Annual Operating and Capital Budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding to the fire department for expenses related to the repair of Ladder Truck One and Ladder Truck Three and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor of consent agenda, less items.
Three and 11.
Three and 11, thank you.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will now go to public input on our old business, which are items 13 through 20, so if anyone would like to address those items.
Tyler Dewey, 149 Tracy Street, Mayor and Commission. At the April 19th Agenda Setting Meeting, Bike Athens expressed our support for the reconfigure, reconfiguration of Chase Street. We cited the quantified risk for people on bike when forced to occupy the same lanes as speeding traffic. This afternoon, we received an updated bicycle level of service for Chase Street. Between Prince Avenue and Bryan Street, Chase receives an F for people on bike. After we spoke, two residents of North Chase Street worried about removing the center turn lane because of concerns the chase, the change may make it more dangerous to enter and exit driveways. Now, we will not discount their experience, just as they would not discount ours. So we have a terrible situation. People who bike on Chase risk being hit by fast-moving traffic. People who live on the street think removing the center turn lane will place them at a greater risk for a car collision as they enter and exit their driveways. How can the commission balance such scales? Who must bear the brunt of the commission's final decision? Ultimately, this dilemma reveals the limitations of the existing ACC Complete Streets policy. If a street becomes safe for people on bike by making it more dangerous for people and cars, it is incomplete. If a street can only stay safe for people and cars by shifting all the risk to people on foot and bike, it is incomplete. Simply suggesting people avoid the corridor altogether is not a solution, nor is making the street so intimidating people on bike, on bike try to avoid it. Of course, some do not have a choice but to ride their bikes everywhere. We can do better. As stated in the Athens-Clark County Complete Streets policy and affirmed by the National Complete Streets Coalition, quote, "Everyone, regardless of age, ability, income, race, or ethnicity, ought to have safe, comfortable, and convenient access to community destinations and public places, whether walking, driving, bicycling, or taking public transportation," end quote. The debate about Chase Street has fallen far from these ideals. In the end, we are left with a process that forces neighbors to ask the commission to protect their safety by making the street more dangerous for others. This cannot be how we move toward promoting safe and convenient travel for all users. Therefore, regardless of the final decision on the configuration of Chase, we hold to our vision of vibrant, walkable streets across all of Athens-Clark County, and we renew, and we renew our request to strengthen the Complete Streets policy to ensure Chase Street, indeed all our streets, are safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Anyone else wish to address anything on our old business?
Mayor Denson and Commissioner, my name is Amy Roark. I live at 145 Kane Street, Athens, Georgia. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Chase Street PTO as the president-elect. Basically, my daughters and I cross North Chase Street every day to get to school where there's no crosswalk, and we don't feel like it's safe, and we really believe that we need to put crosswalks in where people cross our streets. We want to make our neighborhood safer for pedestrians and for cyclists, and crosswalks are an integral part of that plan from a pedestrian's standpoint. As you know, we collaborated with our community, and we have over 250 signatures of support, as well as a letter of permission from Mr. Chambers, the property owner of some of those properties on North Chase Street. And we just really appreciate your time and consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roark.
Hey, y'all. My name is Tony Eubanks. I live at 785 North Pope Street. I'm here speaking on behalf of Complete Streets Athens. We support the letter that Bike Athens submitted, and as a matter of fact, we were joint submitters of that letter of the bike lane. It's just not fair to make, pit neighbors against neighbors. Who's going to be the most unsafe? That, that's not a way to run a railroad. So I think that we made good points in that letter and fully support that. We support the Chase Street PTO. That's the people who use the street. When, when, at the work session, David Clark said that those crosswalks, mid-block crossings that serving 1010 Prince Avenue Medical Center were right where people use them, so we're going to leave them right where they are because that's where they're used. Well, let's put some crosswalks where people will use them on Chase Street to get to school. Regarding the need for a, a more complete, complete streets policy, my wife thought this was a bad idea to tell this story, but for the 12 years I've known my wife, we've been going to Nashville to see her parents, and they live in, near an area called Green It's everything you want. It's surrounded by great neighborhoods, it's got shopping, it's got grocery, it's got movie theater, kind of like what we have on, in Athens and in many different places. But they build no sidewalks. They have no sidewalks, and so the only way you can get to Green Hills Shopping Area is to drive. And when we were there this last Thanksgiving, it was absolutely a nightmare. I mean, you couldn't, the, the only way you can get from one node to another in this area, I don't know, it's, it's not a mile, the only way you can get from one place to the other is to drive. And my mother-in-law was driving us, and we, we had to move several times by car, and it's just a nightmare. And if we don't start creating other safe and convenient ways for people to drive, for people to get to where they want to go except for driving, we're going to have the same thing. You want to talk, I mean, people complain, ah, the traffic, the traffic. You want to, you want to talk about traffic? Let's see what traffic's like if we keep emphasizing the automobile at the expense of bike and pedestrian infrastructure. It, it's not going to work. We don't have the room. It physically cannot be where everybody can get everywhere they want to go by car. So the only way that we can alleviate that demand is to create a supply of another alternative infrastructure. So I second Tyler's comments about a more rigorous Complete Streets policy and implementation. You know, I support the, the move. I think Commissioner Link is going to introduce a CDO on how to address, balance those concerns a little bit better, but let's serve the constituents in a way that we can, that we can sustain, because we can't do it with cars alone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eubanks.
My name is Ilio Winham, and I live at 923 North Chase Street, which is a house just north of a small alterations shop, and I'm, want to speak in support of the North Chase Street Lane Reconfiguration Option defined by Melissa Link, which maintains the center turn lane from, from Chase Street, starting at Boulevard North. And let me put it this way, if, if North Chase Street did not have a center turn lane and the plan was to add one, the benefits that would arise from establishing a center turn lane would be easy for everyone to see. Cars traveling northbound or southbound down the street can make a left turn without impeding the flow of traffic. Residents who live on North Chase Street can receive deliveries from the UPS driver without impeding the traffic because the cars have the center turn lane to drive around a delivery truck like that. Large delivery trucks and semi-trucks that are making deliveries to that DeVor and Johnson business or are helping a family get a couch or a crib or a large piece of furniture have a place to stop in the center turn lane because they cannot park in the small driveways along North Chase Street. If there's debris in the road, cars can avoid that by using the, the center lane. And so I just want to support that option, and with all due respect to the bike riders, which I definitely respect, I think the benefits of having that lane outweigh the disadvantage of not having room for bike lanes. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Winham.
Madam Mayor, respected Commissioners, my name is Peter Norris. I reside at 460 Sunset Drive. I am the vice chair of the Upper Cony Watershed Network, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you today on item number 17. I rise in opposition to that component of the Service Delivery Plan specifying $20 million for a new reservoir because it is unnecessary and will have enormous environmental and economic costs. The consultant who created the Service Delivery Plan overestimated water demand resulting from population growth. It is unrealistic to expect that water use follows the same linear curve as the state's population growth prediction. In fact, here in Athens, we have managed to reduce our water consumption while increasing population. A reservoir is environmentally disruptive because it fundamentally and irreversibly alters the topography and biological stability of the region. It is, and it is not even assured that a new reservoir can be filled because the Georgia EPD has overallocated withdrawal permits for the Middle and North Oconee Rivers. A $2 million figure is an estimate for just preliminary design and site selection. Engineering, construction, and maintenance costs can cost, can be an additional $30 to $40 million. And because of inevitable cost overruns, we can expect the final bill to be significantly more. Your colleagues in Walton County believe they were being prudent by budgeting $41 million for the Hard Labor Creek Reservoir. That project will end up costing about $350 million, and it will be at least three more years before they can withdraw any water from that reservoir. None of this information is new to you, as it has been sent to you by Doctors Kyle McKay and Doctor Chris Mangiolo, local experts in hydrology and water policy. Urge you to base your decision on documented facts rather than relying on outdated practices and misperception. We understand the difference between water conservation and drought management, and support staff's efforts to develop a risk analysis for our water supply. But the best way to reduce risk is to reduce, reduce one's exposure to risk. The Water Conservation Office has done an outstanding job of helping us use less water, thereby reducing our exposure, but we have only scratched the surface of water conservation possibilities. To the best of my knowledge, there has been little discussion behind the rail of implementing proven best practices, such as low-flow fixtures, pervious surfaces, domestic cisterns, and gray water irrigation for ornamental plants and lawns. It is my understanding that some of our zoning and construction codes prohibit these solutions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Norris.
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Sidney Bakas, Post Office, Box 174, Athens, Georgia. I'm here to speak about my objections to items number 17 and 18 on the old business, under old business. Items, I concur with the concerns that were just expressed by the previous speaker about the financial element of the Public Utilities Department Service Delivery Plan, which proposes approximately $20 million for land acquisition for a new reservoir. And in addition to the concerns I expressed about the lack of conservation of water from the proposed dump expansion, I'm here to remind you that the U.S. Geological Survey published a report in 2000, which found that large bodies of water, such as the one that would be, occur by a new reservoir, actually lose more water to evaporation than was originally determined by pan-evaporation measurements. That means that actually during times of drought and below normal rainfall, there is a possibility that those reservoirs could actually be de-watering the aquifer. So that is not water conservation. I also oppose the approximately $38 million total expenditures for the sludge-thickening building construction, which no doubt would create more municipal sewage sludge to go to the dump and further injure the victims of the Billups Grove Baptist Church and Dunlap Road community. The Sewer Creek Cedar, the Sewer Cedar Creek WRF Solar Energy Construction, which would be better spent, money better spent for the anaerobic digesters that I have continually recommended, that would use sewage sludge to create energy. The Sewer Alternative Energy Evaluation Design, the Sewer North Oconee WRF Total Phosphorus Polishing Construction, the Total Phosphorus Polishing Construction for Sewer Middle Oconee WRF. All of those have been shown in Florida studies to be ineffective because the phosphorus removed is not sufficient enough to secure the protection of the streams that these plants would discharge to. So I'm here to urge you to spend that money to something that we know will help conserve water and water quality rather than these items that are proposed. And please also refer to my comment letter for additional details. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bakas.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. My name's Michael Smith. My family owns property on Bryan Street off North Chase. When I first looked at the plan a few weeks back at the Planning Commission Building, I had concerns about the elimination of the turn lanes on the loop side of the railroad tracks, and, but then I thought about it. And, you know, you can make a lot of arguments about the need for the turn lanes to stay between the railroad and the loop and the railroad and continuing towards Prince Avenue. However, I believe that the area, it's more important to look into the future and not to what, to how we operate today. And I think that by having the wide bike lanes on each side of the street, we're going to really increase both pedestrian and bicycle safety in both sections, either side of the railroad track. Because for the people that actually walk down there, and we're going to have more people walk as the area, Southern Mills develop, you know, you have cars passing you going 45 miles per hour, two feet away, by keeping those white, and you have no sidewalk on the east side of North Chase Street after you get past the railroad track. So I, I mean, I understand all the arguments to, to keep the turn lanes, and they're very good arguments, but I think over the course of the time, we're not going to be able to change the, the culture of the neighborhood past the railroad tracks or the way that we navigate that neighborhood unless we have wide, safe bike lanes for both pedestrians and cyclists. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wish to talk to us?
My name is Michael Moody, and I don't live in Clark County. I live in Oglethorpe, but I own property on Oconee Hill. That makes a difference. I'm really against having another reservoir. In the past, we've watched Atlanta grow and have all the problems they have, and the information seems to get lost that they really are called evaporation ponds. During the last major drought, they figured that there was more water evaporating from Lake Lanier than the people of Atlanta use on a day-to-day basis, to give you an idea of how ineffective they are. So there are many solutions, including showerheads and all the kind of infrastructure that you can insist on, it's much cheaper, and of course, the rivers are important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor Denson and the Commission. My name is Doctor Chris Mangiolo. I reside at 220 Dr. Martin Luther King Parkway, 30601, right on the North Oconee River. I'm also the Policy Director for Georgia River Network. I've submitted comments, shared comments with all of you over the last couple of weeks. Georgia River Network is a statewide organization working to engage and empower Georgians to enjoy and protect rivers from the mountains to the sea. Our membership includes over 700 individuals and over 30 different river organizations throughout the state, and I'm organizations throughout the state, and I'm here specifically to speak to item number seventeen. First and foremost, Georgia River Network has always advocated for rigorous study of all water supply options. There are many alternatives to water supply reservoirs, and reservoirs should always be considered an option of last resort. The second thing that I want to talk about today is that I want to encourage you, I understand there's some commission-defined options that will be offered that will modify the Public Utilities Service Delivery Update. Such modifications, as I understand them, represent what I would consider a smart or soft path to water planning. This direction is preferable to a hard path that would include land acquisition, possibly for an unneeded reservoir. Such an investment in land in particular would represent a sunk cost that may not be an appropriate use of limited resources. And we can look at examples of failed reservoir projects all over the state in the last, really last few months, particularly in Newton County and Hall County as well. These counties acquired thousands of acres of land, and now perhaps it's unclear what they're going to do with that property. Third, the price tag on a reservoir is a moving target. For example, when Cherokee County proposed to build Hickory Log Creek Reservoir, it was estimated to cost nineteen million. The actual cost ended up being a hundred million, and then they still had problems actually bringing that project online. They were proposing that they might actually have to build a transmission line, which would have added, you know, tens of millions of dollars. Closer to Clark County, the Hard Labor Creek Water Supply Reservoir in Walton and Oconee Counties, the cost there ballooned from forty-one million to three hundred and fifty million. And then, of course, there were cost overruns with our local project as well on Bear Creek. And I would add one piece on these escalating costs, like none of these costs were caused by any kind of environmental group suing, right? These were not costs that were increased because of any legal challenges or environmental impact studies. Fourth, according to the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, which is, as many of you know, kind of functions as an infrastructure bank here in the state, according to GFA, projects that construct new dams tend to cost more than raising existing dams for volume expansion. In other words, well, one thing I would encourage the county to really take a rigorous look at is using existing infrastructure and enhancing it as opposed to building new infrastructure. For example, it was in two thousand eight, GFA actually identified Sandy Creek's Lake Chapman as a possible expansion project. That volume could be expanded, so any forward movement on water supply planning in Athens Clark County should include repurposing and enhancing existing infrastructure. The fifth thing I would say is this regional water planning. Take a look around at your communities around you. There have been a lot of water supply projects that have come online or will come online in the next couple of years. So, thank you very much.
Dr. Mangiolo, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Jason Matherly. I live at nine sixty-five North Chase Street. I just wanted to speak in support of Melissa Link's, some of her changes to the North Chase Street lane reconfigurations. At a previous meeting, I spoke about my concerns with the center lane being removed, and I also made it very clear that I wanted to find some sort of compromise. I didn't want to just not have bike lanes. I want to support that as well. And I think that this is, I don't think it's going to be perfect in that area. There's a lot of limitations just because of the nature of where the loop is and all of these things. But I think that, I mean, I'm not an expert, but Melissa's suggestions seem like the best compromise that I could imagine. So we really appreciate that work, and my wife and I appreciate that. And so that's, I just want to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matherly.
Good evening. My name is Erin Thompson-Potvin. I live at eight sixty-three North Chase Street, and I'm also speaking about item fourteen, the proposed changes along the Chase Street corridor. Thank you, Mayor and Commission, for taking our comments. And my husband was here, and my son, who are in the hall, were here a few weeks ago to speak with you all at the agenda-setting meeting. And I just would like to speak as well and thank Commissioner Link for listening to the concerns of her constituents living along the Chase Street corridor with regard to the proposed changes and for taking the time to meet with several of us as well as with some of the citizen advocates with Bike Athens and Georgia Bikes. My family and I are in support of the commission-defined option that Commissioner Link has brought forward. We appreciate that her plan maintains the center lane in the residential stretch of Chase Street, providing residents with a much-needed refuge for entering and exiting our driveways safely. Additionally, we believe that the recommended additions of traffic calming measures such as double-stripe bike lanes, flashing your speed sign, the crosswalk and flashers at Natahila, and others that were mentioned, we believe that they all will go far toward making the corridor more pedestrian and bike-friendly, which is something that, as a family living there, we also want to see. We also appreciate the mention of further studies, traffic studies, studies on bike and pedestrian use, and the importance of further information gathering in general. I believe these are critical to determining what the actual needs are along the corridor as opposed to the answer we were given at the April eleventh public forum, which was that the changes were being considered because the road was quote-unquote "the same width along." I don't think that that is, I think that's a short-sighted way to look at bringing about changes. I speak tonight as a concerned citizen who wants to see a solution that is mutually beneficial for all users of the corridor, and I speak as a new mother who is paralyzed by the thought of having to stop dead in traffic on Chase Street to try and turn into her driveway or to have to accelerate rapidly into oncoming traffic to get out of my driveway with him in the car. So I thank you in advance for considering the commission-defined option. And I just would like to add as a side note, and I don't want to say it negatively, but just to, on the record, in a disappoint, as sort of a disappointment, we were told at the public forum that our comments would be shared in their entirety, and several neighbors and other concerned citizens did come that night. I do know from my conversations with Commissioner Link that my comments, nor my husband's, were shared with their entirety to the commission, and I, that was unfortunate because we were told by the folks running the meeting that those would be shared. I can't speak to other folks' comments, but I knows ours were not. And I think when people take the time to share their concerns and we're told that they'll be shared, it would be nice to be able to go on good faith that they were going to be shared. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jerry Daniel, 197 Beulah Avenue, Athens, Georgia. I'm not going to say what other people have already said up here. I do support Commissioner Link's commission-defined option, and now's our chance to re-strike Chase. We should do it right. I want to speak, you know, more and more people want to bike and walk. It's not just the car anymore. We have to embrace many modes of transportation. So now's our chance to do that for Chase Street. It makes it safer for cars, it makes it safer for people, it makes it safer for bikes, it makes it safer for our kids to get to school, which is the most important thing, in my opinion. Also, I'm in support of the closure of that little stretch of Newton Street between megs and Prince, kind of a similar issue. People want this outdoor spaces, these green spaces. This is a great way to make the street a little bit safer. It's not really safe turning either way onto that little meg stretch from Prince, whether you're going out or in, they just switched it one way to the opposite direction. So I would support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Elliot Caldwell, 160 West Overdrive, Athens. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I come not just for myself as an ACC resident, but also a staff person for Georgia Bikes, statewide bicycle advocacy organization. While we do concur with a lot of what Tyler and Tony said in terms of maybe an incomplete-complete streets policy, in terms of the Chase Street reconfiguration, item fourteen, we support a lot of the things that Commissioner Link has put in in terms of buffered bike lanes and crosswalks leading to Chase Street School. And we really, we want to commend Commissioner Link for taking the initiative and trying to find some solutions, and also commend the Chase Street PTO for taking an active role in trying to get something done in an area that's hard to understand. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a planner, I'm a social worker. Most people aren't engineers or planners in this community. So it's exciting to see people take an interest and try to get involved. I mean, I think one thing that folks might not realize is that, you know, my position with Georgia Bikes, I'm actually paid through a grant through Voices for Healthy Kids, which is a joint initiative of the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the American Heart Association, which are very mainstream public health organizations. Fighting for bike lanes and sidewalks and crosswalks and kids getting safely to school, that's mainstream public health in 2016. That's not some radical concept pushed by some bike advocacy agenda from out of state. That's mainstream public health. And so, and so sometimes when I talk to folks about what I do, they think that it's somehow removed from people's day-to-day lives, and in fact, it's not. The second point, Georgia Bikes recently did some polling statewide in the five largest cities that are not Atlanta, Athens being one of those cities, and on complete streets specifically. And what we found is that, you know, eighty-plus percent of Athenians completely support complete streets, implementation, spending money on projects just like this, crosswalks, buffered bike lanes, you know, sidewalks. Athenians support these things. And if you, you know, in my comments, I put a link to the study, to the polling. Please check it out. And not just that, the two biggest sort of initiatives that people support were safer routes to schools and connecting to underserved and sort of more isolated areas, which this project completely meets that criteria. So I want to thank again Commissioner Link for taking initiative on this, on the CDO. And again, we would like to see a better complete streets policy in Athens, and I would love to be a part of helping that process as well as a bike master plan that can sort of better move us forward on biking and walking issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Hi, guys, how's it going? My name is Gretchen Elsner. I get my mail at Post Office Box 562. It was less than a year ago, end of May last year, that I got hit riding on my bicycle and came to meet you guys for the first time. So, and I've learned a lot about the way my local government runs since then. I'm very happy to be alive, and I'm very happy that you guys are looking so thoroughly and closely at bike infrastructure in our community. I'm very thankful that I'm able to ride my bike again and get to places that I need to go. I can't tell you how good it is for my health, my mental and emotional health, my physical health. The doctors who spoke with you earlier really hit the nail on the head, you know, there's just no better way to survive and thrive. And of course, the other thing we really need is good, clean drinking water, and so I also wanted to speak to you about the reservoir plans. I know the Georgia Climate Change Coalition would like very much to help in water conservation education. It's a very, very limited resource, and we are not the only ones that are trying to use it. There are a lot of other creatures in our region that depend on our watershed. So just spending a whole bunch of money and taking up a whole bunch of that land and water just for ourselves is rather selfish and short-sighted. So I hope that you guys will consider making other investments in the future of our community. And thank you so much for your service to us.
Thank you, Ms. Elsner. Anyone else wish to speak to us on these items?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, good to be with you again. I'm Jim Hopkins. I reside at eighteen nineteen South Lumpkin Street here in Athens, and I serve as the Chair of the Hospital Authority as well as Athens Regional Health Services. I'm speaking in support of item thirteen, requesting your consent with our affiliation with Piedmont Healthcare. As you know, strengthening our healthcare system has been our primary focus, and we've had a disciplined process. We've achieved our eight core objectives with the selection of Piedmont. They are an excellent healthcare system and partner. The Piedmont affiliation creates significant benefits of scale, access to capital, clinical improvement and hub growth, physician recruitment, GME expansion, continuation of indigent care, and removal of all local government debt obligations. Your influence continues to the Hospital Authority. Community influence continues through a local ARMC board, and strategic influence is enhanced with local seats on the corporate Piedmont board. Our healthcare system today has a one-point-three-billion-dollar economic impact on our community. We can only imagine what the future impact will be. Our mission is to improve lives. Our vision is to be the best. We appreciate your leadership and your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Hi, I'm Carl Jordan, 185 Kings Road. I address your consideration of the Service Delivery Plan. These PUD improvements read like a Christmas wish list, and the two-hundred-and-forty-million-dollar price tag is huge. Most of it is from internal sources, but all must be recovered from water and sewer billing increases. For residential customers, that is about twenty-eight dollars a year beginning this July, and then additional similar amounts for each of the next five years, for total increase by FY twenty-two of about a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. Not chump change, to be paid uniformly by both rich and poor citizens. Think about it carefully, as a highly regressive revenue source imposed upon a basic citizen necessity. Now what about the spending wish list? The twenty-million-dollar initiation of a new reservoir should be absolutely deleted. Its inclusion is based upon dubious, intentionally upward-biased population projections, especially out on Cleveland Road, upon an unjustified linear causality between population and water use, and upon superficial dismissal of alternative means of achievement. Missing altogether is an anticipated total reservoir budget, surely at least a hundred million dollars, or any reference to its extraordinary environmental impacts. For example, there's no mention of the huge evaporation loss of about five feet per year, or that its most likely location would be in the Broad River watershed. It would be a disastrous watershed transfer. Second, ACC has just spent about two-hundred-and-ten million on state-of-the-art sewage treatment projects, including tertiary treatment anticipated to achieve a phosphorus discharge equivalent to that of membrane technology. Does requesting another twenty-one million for additional phosphorus treatment means these facilities are not functioning as promised? If not, then those improvements should move to the top of the list rather than waiting five, six, and seven years when tighter regulation is expected to be imposed. Third, included is design for leak detection in 2017 and flow monitoring in 2025. Are they not complementary and urgent, and why is implementation money not provided, only design money? Fourth, trunk line improvements are scheduled for both the Middle Oconee for 2017 and the North Oconee for 2018. Because the Oxbow Greenway Connector is waiting for complimentary paired construction, the North Oconee improvement should be moved forward to 2017. Finally, PUD buildings have been recently constructed or remodeled, including the Beecham, Snipes, and Athens Federal Buildings. Now imminent short-term renovations are listed for eight-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars.
Mr. Jordan, I'm sorry, your hands up.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mark McConnell. I reside at twenty-five ten Commerce Road, Athens, Georgia. And I'd like to say first, thank you, Carl Jordan, for coming here all the way from Idaho to speak on this issue. All right, so I don't know if some of you know this, but I got a lot of certificates on water stuff, Biological Get the Dirt Out, Federal Clean Water Act, Stormwater Erosion Control. I've taken a lot of these courses, stormwater BMPs, a lot of stuff. I worked on the UON Board for four years, and when the scientists tell us stuff, we should listen. Reservoirs are destructive. They cause a lot of environmental impact that you don't get back. Just recently, our CO2 levels in the atmosphere went to four-hundred-and-nine parts per million. That doesn't mean a lot to everybody, but if you study climatology, it means we're in deep you-know-what. And building a reservoir just doesn't make any sense, and we need to think about things that make sense and try to do the right thing, and listen to the people who have the expertise in this stuff. Besides the money factor, the environmental factor is the thing that we should be paying most attention to. So I say no reservoir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Anyone else?
This is on a different subject. I didn't know that. I came here just on one subject.
You can speak on another subject, yes, sir.
As a local resident, but not even a Athens Clark, I have family who lives here, I've watched all the local hospitals dry up and go away, and people driving a long way, and I hate to see Athens lose control and see having all of us have to go to Atlanta for a lot of our medical issues. So even though this Piedmont thing might sound good on the dollar side up front, the long term is I hate to see us lose control of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's not spoken? Okay, we're going to come behind the rail. Okay, we're going to come behind the rail, and the first item we're going to address is number three. Ms. Link, you ask that to be taken off the agenda, the consent agenda?
Yeah, the gentleman approached the podium with concerns about the jail expansion, and I thought this would be a good time to clarify the history of that project, that this is adding on to, you know, an ongoing SPOS project, and the manager might be better equipped to address that.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, would you help us, please?
Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor. So back in 2008, when the planning of this facility first started and the design a couple years later, it was anticipated, we had a budget of $58 million, and when we had a cost estimating firm come in, it projected the budget would be higher. And so, like in many projects, the team began to pare back what the scope of the project was. You know, it reduced the training area for the sheriff's office, it removed the replacement of the roof from the scope, it removed the HVAC units from the scope, it removed the emergency generator from the scope, and it reduced the design standards in general for the older portion of the jail. As you know, we've just finished Phase One, which is the new portion of the jail, and that project was bid much less. We got very fortunate, I think, in the wake of the recession, and contractors were still hungry, we got a very favorable bid there. So instead of being above budget, we were considerably below budget. But we didn't want to talk about what we might add back to the scope until we got through with the new construction, because you never know, you know, what's underground, the site conditions that you could run into. Well, we have just finished Phase One, the new construction, in February, and several things have happened. One is, in starting to destruct parts of the old jail, we're finding conditions, as the gentleman pointed out, unforeseen. At the same time, when we're working with the contractor, we now know that we have some funds left over that were part of the original budget. And so, do we want to spend SPOS-eligible funds to put scope back into the project? Otherwise, we'll have to use general funds. We have to replace a roof in the near future. We have to replace the HVAC in the near future. We have to replace the generator in the near future. So which pot of funds do you want to use? We have savings from the jail, from the bidding, and there are really, there's really four categories, for the benefit of the audience. And one is, this, over half of it is what we would otherwise pay with taxpayer dollars we could pay with SPOS, those things that I just named. Then there are the required code-compliant issues. As we went through the first, the Phase One, the new jail, we had a lot of conversations with the fire marshal, and we came to understand that, particularly in the old jail, the sprinkler piping was not code-compliant. That's a large part of that cost. That's another couple million dollars, including replacing door frames, new beams and columns, wiring conduit for the security locks. So there's a lot more involved than might meet the eye, but it boils down to, we had savings from the bidding in the jail, there was stuff taken out at the very beginning, and we're trying to put that back in so that the old jail design standards and mechanical and plumbing will be equivalent to that to the new jail.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
And I just want to follow up. The jail expansion was a SPOS project that kind of had some federal mandates behind it. Is that the case? Maybe Commissioner Gertz can, do you know the reason it was on the SPOS docket? We were, we had kind of indications from above that we had to expand and improve our jail because of conditions that were existing at the old jail. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, I was on the--
Yeah, y'all, excuse me.
Okay, maybe--
Excuse me just a minute. Y'all need to wait for me to call on you, rather than having cross-conversations. We'll never get through our meeting. Did you have--
Well, I want to answer the gentleman's concerns about why we are expanding the jail. So maybe somebody who is on that committee can address that, so the public knows.
Okay. Mr. Gertz, you wanted to speak?
I'll make a couple of comments, and there may be some follow-up that Manager Williams and Commissioner Neesmith would like to make, specifically regarding a mandate. No, in fact, you know, we're not under a consent decree. You know, some communities have found themselves in that position when their facilities have been demonstrated as violating constitutional provisions, but we've not been in that boat. Certainly, some of the conditions that Manager Williams described, insufficient fire prevention, some structural failure, I mean, those over time could have gotten us closer to, I think, what you're describing, but no, I mean, we've not been in a situation where we've been mandated to produce a new jail, but certainly, we don't want to get there. The other thing that I just wanted to say briefly, associated with the changes that Manager Williams described, particularly the roofing and the HVAC, and relating back to the gentleman's comments at the podium, is that those are the kind of capital modifications that will save us operating dollars on a year-in, year-out basis. And so, we're always thinking in the government, certainly I am, and I think I share this with my colleagues, both on the staff and commission level, how can we create an environment in which we don't have to spend excess dollars on heating and cooling facilities, doing patchwork that costs us more than doing a complete repair job? And so, in ongoing operational terms, you know, loathe as I am to see money go to the jail versus many other things on my personal wish list, I know this is going to put us in an advantaged position vis-à-vis our ongoing operating costs. So I want to make those couple of comments. I don't know if others had some follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Gertz. Mr. Neesmith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's very well said, Kelly. That's pretty much what I was going to say, but I do want to reiterate the fact that sooner or later, as the manager said, we would have to be doing these, taking these expenses on. So using it with existing SPOS money that's already allocated to the jail project makes a great deal of financial sense. The other problem, of course, when we decided to build a new jail is because we didn't have, our jail wasn't big enough. Sad as that may be, it wasn't big enough. We were spending a great deal of money sending our inmates to other counties, which is both inconvenient for them and expensive for us. So I think this is a good move, and in the long run, it'll save us money. As far as, yes, Georgia has more people per capita in jail than any state in the world. But until we take care of mandatory sentencing, that's the way it's going to be.
Mr. Harrod.
Thank you, Madam. I didn't have much else to add, except that I do believe also, one of the questions from the gentleman that addressed us at the podium was, why could this money not be spent on schools? It's very simple. It's a state law. This is a SPOS project, and we have to, this was voted on as a referendum by the citizens, and we have to spend this money on the jail. We can't spend it on building schools.
Thank you, Mr. Harrod. Anyone else on this subject? Mr. Williams, did you want to add something?
I just offer, by way of context, that in 2008, the mayor and commission started down this path because there was a Criminal Justice System Needs Assessment Report that said that the needed capacity for 2030 would be about 825 beds. And I'll remind you all that this is building 780 beds. And another thing that I think that may be lost on the public in general is that we have changed the way that we supervise at the jail. So instead of what you see in the movies, those long hallways where you clink the cup down the bars, these are more like dorms, and they have officers that are in there with the inmates, and it's proven much, much safer for both the inmates and the officers. And the other thing is, in the new jail setup, with the beds that we have, the array, we're able to classify more distinctly different inmates into minimum, maximum, medium security, instead of having all of them in the same general population. So, you know, face value, it seems like we're investing a lot in a jail, but in a way, we are investing for the safety of both the inmates and the guards.
And I will say something that I said when the sales tax referendum was being held in relation to jail, because a lot of people objected to putting money into a jail. The jail that we had was probably cruel and inhuman punishment. We had people sleeping on, looked like trays on the floor with thin little mattresses in them. They weren't cots, they were pieces of plastic land on the floor. There was mold, there was mildew. It was absolutely a place that we should not be putting people. And people that are in our county jail are there, in most cases, awaiting trial. They have not been convicted of anything at that point. And so, I think our citizens very wisely decided to build a jail that was going to carry us for any number of years, that's going to be adequate and humane for the people that live there and for their families that come and visit them. So I'm proud that our community did it. We can't always address every concern that's expressed at the podium there, but I think our commissioners did a good job of trying to let you know why that money's going where it is. So with that, Mr. Gertz.
Madam Mayor, motion for approval of Option 1, A, B, C, D, and E.
Have a motion, have a second. Who was the second?
Second.
Mr. Sims. Is there any need for a roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we will now move to item number 11. And Ms. Link, you asked for that to be moved to?
Yeah, just to clarify, this is a recommendation from the Downtown Master Planning, or actually, this is in reaction to the recommendation from the Downtown Master Planning Committee, referring to an item that we're going to be voting on down the line, item 19 on pavement maintenance. And I'll be requesting that we take Washington Street off of the pavement maintenance plan for next year, because the Downtown Master Plan Committee is recommending Washington and Clayton Streets for possible lane reconfigurations, parking improvements, the kind of things that can be implemented when we do our road resurfacing. So it's just delaying it a year, so we have an actual plan on possibly some new striping or other improvements to that street. So I just want to explain that.
Okay, I'm a little confused. Are you offering a commission-defined option or change to--
No, I just wanted to comment on that item, just to clarify--
It's a comment, okay?
Yeah, it's just a comment on the item, yeah.
So nothing to be voted on?
The commission-defined option comes later.
Okay.
And it's the same street on both items.
Mr. Hanby.
Madam Mayor, since this is no longer on consent, I'd just like to make a comment, also to help clarify what the Downtown Master Plan Implementation Committee is doing. This is a process that we've looked at. The committee has ranked the projects that came out of the Downtown Master Plan, and what we're now trying to do is find a way to pay for these projects. And certainly, there's an opportunity that perhaps will be made available to us next year with T-SPOS that will afford us the chance to sort of check off a lot of the projects that are part of the master plan that was presented by Professor Crowley. And that doesn't mean to say we're going to do all the projects in the master plan, but it does give us an opportunity to look for those that will be transformative for downtown. This is, what we're asking for in this agenda item today is to take a further look in broadening what is currently in a SPOS package for Clayton Street to include, as a T-SPOS, perhaps, measure, opportunities along more of Clayton Street, but also opportunities along Washington Street that could really change the look and feel of downtown, which, you know, something like this only comes across us maybe once in a lifetime, if that. So I think we've got several things in the pot, several irons in the fire, I guess, if you will say, that will help us do some really good things for downtown. So I'm glad the committee voted to move forward with this, and I hope we can move forward in a year as a SPOS recommendation, but that's yet to be determined, because that will have to be voted on by the citizens. So I'll make a motion that we approve this recommendation.
Have a motion, have a second.
I'd like to second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will move on to item number 13, which is the vote on the Hospital Authority, Clark County's request for consent on the proposed ARMC affiliation with Piedmont Healthcare. And Mr. Bearman, would you brief us on the revision in our agenda item, please?
Yes, there's an amended agenda item with a change to Option 1, and the only purpose for that is to, just to say that we are still reviewing all of the documents. There are some changes being made. It hasn't all quite been finalized, so we just want to make this clear that once we've reviewed the documents and they're in final form, the mayor can then authorize the consent once that process has occurred. Everything's going just fine. We just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bearman. Any discussion? Mr. Neesmith?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to address the concern about Athens losing control of the regional hospital. I think the bigger danger over time is us losing the hospital if something like this doesn't occur. The fact is that Piedmont is going to be putting almost half a billion dollars into both retiring $200 million worth of bonds, and the rest of it is for capital improvements and so forth. I think Piedmont's intentions seem clear, and that is that this becomes a regional hub for their hospital, their nonprofit hospital organization, and that what we'll see instead of losing hospitals is we'll see some new urgent care facilities going up around the region, and I think we'll see the services offered at Piedmont Hospital becoming better, perhaps more specialized, but with better equipment, such as robotic surgery, that they're already working on acquiring the equipment for that. So I think this is good for Athens, and I think it's good for the region.
Thank you, Mr. Neesmith.
I'd like to make a motion that we do Option 1, A and B of the revised agenda item.
Have a motion, a second. Mr. Harrod.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I did have some questions at the agenda-setting meeting, specifically about some of the definitions with regards to what was meant by things like significant decrease and financially feasible, et cetera. And I don't know who put it together, but I appreciate whoever clarified some of those terms in the document. I think that gives the community a lot more protection than was the case previously when some of those terms were left a little bit more nebulous than they had previously been. So I appreciate whoever gave some more precision to those terms.
Thank you, Mr. Harrod. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Okay, have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move to item number 14, and I believe Commissioner Link, you had an option to offer.
Yeah. Let me click on it. This item actually is something that is a result of Chase Street being pulled off the pavement maintenance plan last year. Some of the neighbors rallied, and then the folks from Chase Street PTO rallied. You know, if we're going to repave this corridor, now's the time to talk about pedestrian and bike improvements and possibly traffic calming improvements. It's a difficult corridor, and it changes significantly through the entire length of it, from an industrial kind of high-speed off-ramp area to a neighborhood street, literally. There are about a dozen or so residences that are very, very close to the street, and the traffic is very, very fast as it enters the neighborhood. So when we got the proposal from TPW for the road improvements, it didn't really address that concern with the traffic calming needs in that portion of the residential area of Chase Street. And PTO folks had some additional concerns about the location of the proposed crosswalk. It was originally located at a place that probably wouldn't be used. And we had quite a, we had a public input session, and we didn't see any of that public input really implemented into an updated version of the project that we saw presented to us at our work session a month or so ago. So I've had lots and lots of conversations over the past year, literally, about, you know, what ideally would be the perfect plan for this street to accommodate not only safe auto traffic, because there are, you know, significant wrecks on it, especially at the Nantahela intersection. We see about two wrecks a year there. I know, personally know at least two people who've wrecked their cars at that intersection. But also to accommodate bike lanes. We're going to see a lot of growth on this corridor. We have a couple hundred new bedrooms coming to the Southern Mills Project, a mixed-use project. We have brand-new businesses coming to the corridor, that, businesses that have come before this body. There's a lot of enthusiasm for changes on this corridor, changes in the neighborhood. There's a lot of enthusiasm, you know, especially to kind of revitalize some of the creative-oriented businesses. And, you know, more and more, our businesses are being pushed out of downtown because of rising rents, and folks are very hopeful that this area could be kind of a new kind of local business hub. And one way to ensure that is to improve your pedestrian and your bicycle infrastructure. You know, it's very much an economic development tool as much as a public safety mechanism. And so, I've had long conversations with folks, and there were definitely concerns about losing that turn lane in that residential section, because you've got very steep driveways, very narrow driveways, and the residents in that area use that turn lane as a refuge as traffic approaches them from near the loop, going over little knolls where there's kind of a blind spot. You know, they have to sit there and wait and whip into their driveway. And that's a very legitimate concern. So I also met with folks from Bike Athens and Georgia Bikes, who are, you know, really well-versed in the kind of infrastructure out there and projects that work. well-versed in the kind of infrastructure out there and projects that work, and came up with this compromise. And I spelled it out pretty clearly in my CDO about, you know, the reasonings and the conditions on the road. It's not just about the width of the road, but it's about the topography of the road and the uses along it. And, you know, we determined that it's best to keep that turn lane to the last residential house to allow that to be used by the residences. And it's kind of a sad statement that, you know, in a residential neighborhood, you need a turn lane to get into a driveway. And it just speaks to the lack of safety, you know, with the high speeds on the corridor. I think the 85th percentile speed in that area is around 38 miles an hour, which means that 15% of the cars are going higher than 38 miles. So I propose that we keep that lane, but we add a little median as the lane, as the proposed bike lanes, and, you know, as you go over that bridge, and there's a little hill there, and add the green paint. So cars get a clear signal that this is, you know, you are entering a residential street. These bike lanes are merging. And honestly, you shouldn't need bike lanes on a residential street if the traffic is going at a speed that's appropriate for a residential neighborhood. So we did add all these amenities, you know, a lot of extra paint, including a crosswalk at Nantahala, which not only is a safety mechanism for the folks that use and cross Nantahala on a regular basis, including folks going to Chase Street School. And in fact, when I was out there on Chase Street with the folks from Georgia Bikes and Bike Athens, you know, we did a lot of walking up and down the street, and we saw about 10 cyclists go by. This was on a Saturday.
Ms. Link, I'm sorry. We have five minutes for each mission. We'll come back to you.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on this? I mean, I hope you all have read it.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this?
No.
Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. Appreciate the work that Commissioner Link, in conjunction with staff, put into looking at how to do this in as functional a way for all the users. I think as some of the speakers at the podium noted, you know, we should never have to find ourselves where we feel like, you know, one contingent is giving up safety for another. And I think in the big picture, ultimately, I don't believe we'll be in that boat. And I want to mention a couple of ongoing Athens-Clark County activities that I think will demonstrate a commitment to countywide safety for pedestrians, for cyclists, and for vehicles as well. The Legislative Review Committee is right now taking a very comprehensive look at our sidewalk programming, both from the 30,000-foot level and kind of at the granular level as well, in conjunction with at least two state agencies and outside consultants. And so I'm excited about that work moving ahead and paying dividends, particularly as we move into the prospect of a T-SPLAS environment where additional funds will be available to implement what I think will be a more comprehensive pedestrian approach. Similarly, I've had many indications that funding of an update to the Bike Master Plan is forthcoming in the next fiscal year, and I very much look forward to the engagement with the community in that process. And I very much hope that across all of our departments, leisure services, transportation, public works, even public utilities, you know, we look to weave in the way that each of those departments can be beneficial in implementing both complete streets for bike and for pedestrian and for vehicular use. But coming back to this agenda item, I think adding the increased visibility that will be on the ground here, much like we see the increased visibility on Lumpkin Street near the university where it intersects with Baxter Street, will be beneficial. And while some funds are diverted to this project from prospective other funds, I would rather do this in as substantive a manner while it is before us, rather than do it halfway and then have to come at some later date to prospectively put in some additional improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Gertz. Ms. Hamby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I certainly believe I'll be supportive of this, but I do have one concern, and that's the additional expense. And Commissioner Gertz just hit on this about some, from some other funds. And I know as part of this transportation and pedestrian safety package, we had in there some improvements to Milletge Avenue. And those have been voted on, and I certainly don't want to see those projects disrupted. I'm sure, you know, I represent part of Milletge Avenue, as does Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Bell and Commissioner Link. So I just want to make sure and have some assurances that those projects are going to move forward. And if you could, tell me when they're going to be done.
Ms. Williams, can you address that for us, please?
Yes, so we're working with DOT on those improvements to Milletge Avenue, and those discussions are going quite well, and we're hoping that that work will be accomplished in the summer or the fall. My limited conversations with Commissioner Link, what she's proposing, I believe, she hasn't named what source of funding yet tonight, but in our conversations before, the Milletge Avenue funding would be preserved for just that.
Okay. And certainly, as we talk about the budget that's coming up, I would anticipate that we look very closely at what we have put into improving our sidewalk and pedestrian infrastructure. But I just want to make clear, just for the, you know, for the folks, several of us represent, that that was one of our big priorities as well, and I didn't want that to be sidelined in any way.
Ms. Ron.
Yeah, I have some questions to sort of go with my always processing the details with this, because the topic came forward as a lane reconfiguration. And it's, I know that we want to be complete, but I also am trying to understand how the discussion has gone to outside of the curb-to-curb, because I thought we were working on restriping with the best results for between curb-to-curb. And I thought that we had a center lane in the residential area a year ago. So I'm trying to understand how it's moved on to pedestrian events and additional funding. I'm trying to think of this as reconfiguration improvements with the dollars that were set aside for this. And I guess I'm trying to understand how we're, how we can afford to add on this other one, because we have a whole nother list of specific areas. I have three pedestrian deaths in my district from areas and intersections that have been ranked that I'm looking forward to when it's my turn for some of that pedestrian safety to be done. So I'm confused as to how, I mean, I understand the passion for grabbing and fixing as much as we can at this time, but if you could just address the main difference between the lane configurations now and what we had a year ago? Because it sounds like we're back to the middle lane in the residential area, and because the bike lanes were added where it was safer to put them in the wider.
Yes, and if y'all remember, it was a year ago roughly when staff brought forth that design, and the mayor and commission asked to hold on that for a year to restudy it. And at that time, if my memory serves me correctly, staff recommendation was to retain the center turn lane for that segment of Chase. And then it was to three-lane the rest of Chase out to Dairy Pack Road. And that was meant to improve vehicle safety. And what happens when you do that, it creates more space for bike lanes. So the bike lanes were, you know, the center turn lane, the bike lanes, were part of the recommendation last year. There have been some adds to that. And then, of course, Commissioner Link has some extra things that she wants to add as well.
Okay. And then I just wanted to add the other part, too. I understand about the desire for the crosswalks. I spoke about that the last time, and I understand if a parent wants to jaywalk with a kid and not go to where we have crossing guards for the, that's already set up for the safe routes to school. But I remain concerned about establishing crosswalks where there, it's not the safest position as the public input came forward that we've had, because we've had a year on this topic. So I'm also concerned about this coming forward as of last Friday, the details of this commission-defined options, because a lot of this was not what we talked about at our agenda-setting meeting. And I just want to make sure we're as transparent as possible on something coming forward like this, because I know I've had a hard, a long time, hard time getting all my questions answered, and I'm still getting questions answered about that. And also, as far as projections of the Southern Mills project, I'm all for that, too, but I don't believe they've even broken ground yet, too. So I think we also need to be aware of the present conditions and working with that and be ready for ever-changing conditions. So I look forward to hearing what others say.
Ms. Harrod.
I think Commissioner Dickerson was first.
Oh, okay. I didn't see you first, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I have some similar concerns of Commissioner Wright. One in particular is, and it is kind of hard to follow, I had to go through this several times because we're just all over that road. And the road does change significantly from Prince Avenue out to Newton Bridge. And as a child growing up here, that has always been, that second, that last half has always been industrial with the, you know, with the, all the facilities and stuff that are out there, although we've lost a few, and then all the traffic coming in and off the loop right there. So that's a concern. And I guess the thing I think about, too, building off what Commissioner Wright said, is Southern Mills hasn't even broke ground yet, and there are alternate routes. I drove it on the way in. I used to drive it all the time when I worked down at the solid waste department on College Avenue, but there are lots of other roads that people, that are living at Southern Mills could use. They could go down Onida to Barber Street. It's only 30 miles per hour. People were running tonight when I was coming in. There must have been an event at Terrapin tonight, so there were people, or not Terrapin, at Creature Comforts. So there were people running, you know, and it was, it wasn't dangerous, there weren't that many cars. So I guess I think about, although it's great to have complete streets, I think there are streets in our community, including highways, Andy and I have one, where we don't think it's a good idea to have them right on the road. And hopefully, if we move forward with some of the things we have on our agenda for our side, we'll have accommodations for them, but they won't be on the road with heavy trucks, 18-wheelers and whatnot. So that's a concern. I'm also concerned about the Nantahala crosswalk. I guess my first question is, does it even meet the criteria we have for crosswalks? Don't we have a criteria that it has to meet?
Ms. Wiggins.
That's correct. There is, I think back in the mid-2000s, the mayor and commission did adopt a crosswalk policy. And at Nantahala, it does not meet the criteria that was set at that time of 20 pedestrian crossings per peak hour.
Well, my concern would be that we're setting a precedent. If we're going to approve it there, I know Andy and I have some over on Cedar Shoals that people have been begging for, and there's a lot of people walking across that road without any crosswalks anywhere near, and there's one on each end of the road, which is probably a mile long. So, yeah, that's it for right now. I may have some other things.
Ms. Harrod.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also follow up on what Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Dickerson had said. I think that we need to do more in terms of pedestrian safety, and I certainly appreciate Commissioner Link's passion on this particular issue. But there are a lot of other roads in the community that rank more highly in terms of needs than this particular road. And I see here that the additional total cost that's being asked for here is $34,500. I don't believe that includes the cost of a crossing guard that would be needed. Is that correct, to study $4,500?
And that changed since the time that we met with Commissioner Link. There were, the PTO recommendation of a new crosswalk at DeBose was being proposed early on in our conversations, and that would require a school crossing guard. But in the most recent version of Commissioner Link's CDO, I think you deferred that to safe routes to schools discussion.
Okay.
So that's no longer ongoing operational cost.
Okay. But I mean, we do have a list of streets that we have some criteria on for determining where pedestrian and other safety should be augmented through sidewalks and other means. And I'm just concerned that going ahead with this, which we've had since Friday to look at, is leapfrogging this over other streets that frankly are more dangerous. I'm glad to hear that the money is not going to come by being taken away from Milletge. I guess I'm still wondering, would this be taken away from the Prince Avenue project? Or where would this $34,500 come from?
Yeah, the funding source we have in mind is the $40,000 that is left for moving the Prince Avenue crosswalk, which we foresee with recent development on Prince Avenue that that funding won't be necessary. You know, we have a developer who's willing to put up a quarter million dollars to address pedestrian safety crossing concerns on that block. So I sat down with staff, and we did a lot of math. And actually, the initial proposal for improvements on this street to really, truly accommodate the safety needs of those cyclists on what is a high-speed corridor, came to about $74,000, I think. So we did a lot of give and take and did some math, deferred the crosswalk in front of Chase Street to the PTO and the Safe Routes to School Committee. You know, we talked about a crosswalk across Onida, and these crosswalks are intended as much, the biggest problem on this corridor is speed. And the speed does change to 30 miles an hour as you approach the residential neighborhoods, but folks are still going 38, 40 miles an hour, and you have houses that are right up on the curb. And the bike lanes will...
Can I have the rest of my time?
Yes. Please, Ms. Tipp.
Sorry.
You can.
Thank you. We do have a list of streets that are on our agenda for improvements. Where does this street fall in that list? Mr. Manager?
Now, are you talking about the pavement maintenance program, or are you talking about the safety study?
Safety study.
Yeah. And what Commissioner Harris is referring to, if y'all remember, last year, y'all put $180,000 towards safety improvements, and that was after staff had done a five-year crash history of a number of segments of roads. And that was meant to find out, you know, where was the greatest need for safety. And I think there were 32 segments that were studied, and with the $180,000, there were seven that we did varying. If y'all remember, we prioritized with, you know, immediate and then short-term and long-term, and it was really a mix of those three that were funded with that $180,000, of which 40 for the Prince was identified for that.
And where did this street fall on that list?
So in the Chase Street corridor, from Prince to Boulevard was studied. Boulevard out to Loop was not part of that. Mr. Dewey mentioned an F-rating that they found out today. I haven't seen that. But of the 32 segments, the Chase Street, and this is bicycle and pedestrian conflicts per million miles, vehicle miles, was 32 out of 32, one being the most dangerous and 32 being the safest.
Thank you.
Ms. Harrod, finished?
I am, ma'am.
I'll make sure we can take your time. Ms. Bell, did you want to comment on this?
The one main concern I had at our beginning of discussion was the crosswalks and the one that was offered, and Mr. Chambers offered to give freedom for crossover there. My major concern with that, that sounds great for right now, but if he chose in two or three years, whenever, to sell, the next property owner might not give approval to that, and that would be another expense for us to have to go back and reverse that. So I feel like that needs to be strongly looked at as a contingency on this offering.
Ms. Neesmith.
Madam Mayor, these are all great discussions, and it makes me very uncomfortable about voting on this one way or the other tonight. I would hate to see it be defeated. And at the same time, I'm uncomfortable it being passed with us having such a short time, well, no time to talk about it. We're talking about it tonight, as far as I'm concerned, for the first time. So I'm looking for a way to see if we can maybe table this. No, Allison?
No.
All right. Well, I'm just uncomfortable voting on this tonight. That's my opinion.
Ms. Wright, would you like to comment? Because I think you've asked this question.
Yeah, that was my first, Commissioner Neesmith, that was my first feeling when I read all this. I was like, this is, we've got, there was a year ago, we got what was presented at the public forum. This has not been presented. There were attachments that were visuals. Medical Illustrator, I love visuals. Those never came forward, so it can't be put off. If you drive down Chase Street, you can see it is in terrible shape, because it should have been done already, and now it's a year away from when it should have been done. It's going to be a much safer street once it gets repaved, period. And then, if we can get the restriping down, I'm not sure, if we looked at page 83 of the packet and looked at the purpose of the commission action requested, if that's not capturing it, I'm a little uncomfortable trying to use funds from a crosswalk because somebody's going to, a developer's going to pay for a crosswalk on Prince, and we're not even voting on that topic tonight. So that, that kind of money moving around, I don't think is, it's not something I can vote in that kind of regard. And then the safe routes to school, taking on that crosswalk, I would love to count on that, but I kind of feel it's our responsibility to make sure it's as safe as possible, the crosswalk that they're asking for, although there are crosswalks at the intersections with crossing guards. So I'm trying to, and Melissa, you might have some insights for that, safe routes to school criteria. If they believe that that, DeBose's location fits the safe routes to school criteria, especially since they've already paid for funding at the intersections... to School criteria, especially since they've already paid for funding at the intersections, I can maybe go without doing, paying for that intersection or that crosswalk, if Safe Routes to School is truly going to do it, but I feel like it's our responsibility.
Just, Ms. Link, is there anyone who hasn't spoken who wants to speak to this? Ms. Link.
I just want to clarify that the original crosswalk proposed by staff is still in this plan. The PTO had asked for a second crosswalk, and that's the crosswalk that we're asking them to pursue through the Safe Routes to School program. So this original plan doesn't include, in that Chase Street block, it doesn't include anything extra. And as far as the, you know, we're talking about crosswalk, our crosswalk policy, if folks are uncomfortable with the Nantahala crosswalk, which is seen as much as a traffic calming mechanism as an actual crosswalk. If folks are uncomfortable with that $11,000 allocation, I'm happy to take that off the list, all the rest of these improvements are part of the lane reconfiguration, road improvements to accommodate the bike lanes, and to make sure that there is optimum safety for those bike lanes.
Thank you, Mr. Hamby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, y'all, I appreciate the discussion, I think it's been a good discussion, but I have to say, I don't really have a problem with this. I know there's some additional costs associated with this, and, but I think we can, we can sort of look at this as maybe a pilot project for how we do some streets here in Athens. And also, you know, as, you know, certainly I've given assurances that Millage Avenue, I think it's been one of the higher priorities that Blaine spoke about with the $180,000. We had, that's what the point of this $180,000 was, let's look at some streets, identify which streets we can help within this budget, and hopefully this next budget that the mayor has presented, we can look and see if there's some additional monies we can put towards pedestrian safety. We got T-spots coming up, that's going to be some other things that can help address some of these other streets that are on the list. But what we have now is, what is it, you know, the bird in the hand, is that how you say that? I'm sounding real cliches, yeah, there you go. Bird in the bush, is that right?
Two in the bush.
Oh, you have it in your hand, okay. So at any rate, the bird is somewhere, and it's in reach, and I think we ought to, I think we ought to keep that bird while we've got it, and move forward with this, because, you know, let's see what happens. I used to go down Chase Street quite a bit on Dairy Pack Road, and there are, you know, a lot of trucks come through there, they're fast, and, you know, I just think we ought to see what, see what happens here.
I'll get back to you, Mr. Gerst, Ms. Dickerson first.
Um, Mayor, I was just going to suggest that maybe we take this section by section and see what we can agree to, maybe we can get some agreement that way, it's kind of hard taking it all through, because there's so much information. Perhaps we could talk about Prince to Boulevard and see if there's any concerns about that that need to be voiced, perhaps, just a suggestion, and maybe write this down a little bit if we're going to consider it.
I want to defer to our county attorney and ask him if that's an issue, if we do this one section at a time.
You can divide the question.
Divide the question.
There ought to be a motion to divide the question and second and vote on that.
Okay. Mr. Gerst, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I'd just like to speak broadly about the project. I do find $34,000 to be a modest sum. I mean, in some ways, you know, I sort of want us to take a deep breath and think, $34,000 in the context of enhanced pedestrian cyclist and vehicular safety is really just pennies in the overall scheme, and I think as Mike is suggesting, you know, what we really need to be thinking is, you know, how can we broadly support safety on all of these road segments? I'm looking at our agenda report from, from the work session from last year, you know, I mean, three of the top 10 are on Prince Avenue, and I certainly recognize that we're not going to be addressing that tonight, and I'm eager for that, but that makes me no less interested in addressing pedestrian safety, cyclist safety, and motor vehicle safety on Chase Street. The other thing that I did want to mention, because it's come up a couple of times in discussion, is this question about the timing of the Southern Mills development, and when we're looking at road resurfacing, we're generally looking in decade-to-decade terms, so it's going to be 10 years before we look at this road again, and given the kind of thermoplastic overlays that we're using with striping, we're not going to restripe at some interim period within that 10 years. It's very unlikely that that would be the case. And so again, I'm happy to devote, again, a modest sum, $34,000 to enhance safety here.
Anyone else wish to speak? Well, one of the things I think we need to be clear of is if we take $34,000 out of that $180,000, Mr. Hamby was talking about the bird in the hand, it's got to come from someplace, because we have a priority through that list of pedestrian safety. You know, we're assuming that the, that the project at 100 Prince will materialize, and that $250,000 will be there, but we're making a lot of assumptions, and so we just, everybody needs to be really clear of what we're doing, so. Is there anyone, have a motion? You have questions?
Yeah, this is, this does align with the math part of this. So if the agenda report says it's a capital improvement of 37,500, the commission-defined option is an additional 34,500?
Correct.
Correct. So it's almost twice budget, and I guess I also would like the striping of the ideas that were in the commission-defined option, I think they should match the standards that we are already using. We already, to start putting in the green bike stencil, if that's something that we're going to start doing in our community, I think there's a more appropriate format for that than having it come in this part of the process. I'm having a problem with the process and not letting this process that derived to us Friday interfere with the good ideas that are in it. As, and again, the budget part has to come from somewhere else, and I've got a lot of things in my district that I would like $34,000 to improve.
Anyone else? Does anybody have a motion? Do y'all want to divide the question? We need a motion if you do.
I make a motion that we divide the question.
Have a motion to divide the question, do we have a second? Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
No.
Okay, let's go back and have a roll call, Jean, please.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gerst?
No.
Link?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
No.
Neesmith?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Bale?
Yes.
Harrod?
Yes.
So we have a-
Yes, no, no.
Okay, we have a tie on dividing the question, I'm going to vote yes. So now we have well-accepted motions for whatever you want, however you want to divide it.
Okay, I'd like to divide it, starting with Prince to Boulevard. And do I need to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I make a motion to approve that section as per Commissioner Link's CDO.
Second.
Have a motion second. Let's have a roll call, Ms. Spratt, please.
I need to understand what we're voting on, you just gave me a location, I need to know, what are we voting on?
Okay, well, she has on her CDO on page 77, item 3, based upon the review, she has this, she's listed out item A, which is Prince Avenue to Boulevard, and all those items A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
That's what I'm-
Thank you, very much.
Everybody understand what we're voting on, Ms. Link?
I just want to add that this is pretty much exactly what staff had proposed, except for the crosswalk moved slightly up the street a little bit.
In for a discussion. Okay, we have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Spratt.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gerst?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
Um, yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Bale?
Yes.
Harrod?
Yes.
10 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. Do we have another, a further motion? We've only dealt with part of the question.
Yeah, I'm, I'll make a motion on page 77 at the bottom, item B, Boulevard de Ro Road. I make a motion to accept A, B, 1, 2, B 1 and 2, and then C 1, 2. And that's it. And E, I guess.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm, I'm-
Sorry, we're trying to-
I'm going to give everybody just a minute to look at that, make sure they know what they're voting on.
I'll see, you want to say it again?
Yeah, please.
Okay, all right. So on page 77 at the bottom, Boulevard de Ro, lane configurations, all of those that she's, that have been recommended per the CDO, under bicycle facilities, items 1 and 2 only, although mainly because of the green paint, so not 3, 1 and 2.
3.
Items, no, I said not 3, because of the green sheros, although actually, I'm sorry, 1, 2, and 3, all right, B 1, 2, and 3. This is why we had to break it down, it's pretty confusing. All right, C, pedestrian facilities, just 1 and 2, and not D, just E. That's my vote.
Is everybody comfortable that you know what you're voting on? Okay.
Madam Mayor.
We need a second, though.
Need a second.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion-
Okay, we have substitute motion.
-to accept the commission-defined option for the totality of B Boulevard de Ro Road.
I'll second that motion.
For the, B or D?
B Boulevard de Ro Road.
Oh, you're saying the whole, okay.
And I second that.
And that's as presented to us on-
As presented in the CDO.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion, a substitute motion, and a second. Let's have a roll call, Ms. Spratt, please. Ms. Neesmith, I believe.
No, it's Mr. Bailey.
Oh, it's Mr. Bailey, I'm sorry, I just heard a voice over there.
No, on Ms. Dickerson's motion, who is the second?
Sims.
Sims is the second.
All right, this on the substitute.
Yes, ma'am.
Gerst?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Bale?
Yes.
Harrod?
No.
Dickerson?
No.
Sims?
No.
6 yes, 4 no.
Okay, so the substitute motion is passed, and that still leaves another section, doesn't it?
Yeah, oh yeah, we're still going.
Road, Road to Newton Bridge. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the totality of C, Ro Road to Newton Bridge Road.
I second that motion.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion, pull the vote. Ms. Spratt, would you call the roll, please?
Gerst?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Bale?
Yes.
Harrod?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
10 yes, 0 no.
Great. Okay, I think that takes care of item number 14.
How much is that going to cost us? Can we get, can we get an email on how much that costs us tomorrow?
34,500, I believe, because nothing was removed, was it?
Was staff time for that, send us the bill.
Yes.
Was anything removed from that? I think some green paint, was the green paint removed?
No, I think that got-
No, I think it's-
We got our personal crosswalk.
Mr. Williams, please.
Clarifications?
If I understood all that correctly, that the CDO pretty much passed intact, is that correct? Okay. So perhaps some clarification, it wasn't part of the CDO about the funding source.
Right.
And that, and I just want to point out that what we talked about earlier, Commissioner Link, was that it would come from the Prince allocation of this existing fiscal year. I want to be clear what that means. It means that we will not move the grit crosswalk, nor install the overhead flashing beacons that was previously approved by the mayor and commission. And so if it's appropriate, because that was previously approved by mayor and commission, you know, we can't administratively move that money, so perhaps, Bill, is a motion in order to allocate funding for that, or do we want to come back to that? Otherwise, it'll need to come from contingency, and that also would require, I think, a mayor and commission approval. When I say contingency, I mean general fund contingency.
I think the only way to do it would be to have a motion to reconsider, to add the funding element, so the mayor and commission could determine where the funding should come from.
Okay, we had three different votes, what do we reconsider?
I think it would be the prior action on this agenda item, so it was all positive, I mean, so it resulted in an aggregate amount of money that's required. So I think there ought to be a motion to reconsider A, B, and C, together with a direction as to how the funding is going to be obtained.
Mr. Harrod, do you want to speak to this?
I was just asking, I was going to ask the attorney to say that again.
We, the mayor and commission did not address the funding of the, of the changes. They approved the CDO essentially intact, so I think there should be a motion to reconsider with an approval of where the funding will come from, what's the source of the funding.
And what will the source of that funding be?
Well, the last conversation we had with Commissioner Link was that the existing funding that's been approved by the mayor and commission for FY '16, as part of that $180,000 for pedestrian safety improvements across those seven pedestrian corridors, we talked about approximately $40,000 was allocated for this Prince crosswalk, and that's what I think Commissioner Link's intent is, but I'll let her speak to that.
Well, can I follow up with my question with the attorney? From a legal point of view, the mayor and commission has already voted to approve that money for Prince Avenue. From a legal point of view, can we, can we do this juggling the balls around like this? Or do we have to vote to, vote to unapprove our previous vote for the Prince Avenue?
I'm going to be honest with you, this is the first time anything like this has ever happened, and I'm going to need to think about it a minute.
Mr. Hamby.
Madam Mayor, perhaps we can do this, and just have a motion to reconsider, as Bill has suggested, and then in the motion to reconsider, the money comes, well, we just suggest that the money comes from a contingency, and solve it that way, so that we know, that we know that if the, if, you know, certainly we have monies that we put towards projects, and the projects may or may not come to fruition, and when that happens, it goes back into the general fund. If the Prince Avenue grit crosswalk does not come to fruition, then it goes back into general fund, thus covering the contingency that we've just allocated.
Sounds like a motion, Mike.
Well, we've got to make a motion to reconsider.
I have a parliamentary question.
Yes, Mr. Neesmith, please.
When we do a motion to reconsider, we can't amend the motion or reconsider it. We can only, we can only vote, we can only reconsider the motion that was passed. So how do we change it?
You vote to reconsider, and then you vote again.
No, I think you're right.
When you reconsider, you have to vote.
I think you're right, I mean, I think what has happened is, you have passed an action that has no funding.
Exactly.
And I think it has to be addressed at another meeting, has to be placed on an agenda and come at another meeting.
And what, and if, if funding is not provided for this, the project can't go forward, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, Madam Mayor, if, I'm sorry, Bill.
Go ahead.
And I, I think you're absolutely right, Bill, and so, and we're going to hear the pavement maintenance program agenda item, and if that moves forward, we have time to come back next month before the work will actually be done, and the striping will actually be done, and I think Bill's absolutely right, because if, whether, I don't think it's a budget amendment, if you leave it within the $180,000, if you go contingency, that is a budget amendment, which we don't have prepared. So what I would, let's move forward with this as is tonight, we'll bring back an agenda item for funding next cycle.[1673.41]
Is everybody happy with that?
I will say one thing. This is what happens when things get done at the last minute.
Yes. Agreed.
Without any transparency.
And one of the things I'm sitting here thinking, because several commissioners here tonight said they don't have thirty-four thousand dollars to spend in their district, and are we going to add, take money out of contingency for each item that comes up in any district and add it to it?
Can I add something? You know, the reason this came about is because staff did not include concerns that were raised during the work session, and concerns raised during those public input sessions, to make for the best possible safest project. And they did not consider the actual usage of the road, and speed conditions weren't even a part of it. The speed conditions I asked for in the aftermath, based on reports from the folks who actually use the road and live on the road. So, I feel like if we had had a better, more inclusive public input process, and there was, and that information was shared with us, and possibly had the public brought in in the beginning, before we even had a work session, we might have had a better project from the beginning, and not had to have a scramble behind the rail like we often do.
Madam Mayor, may I address that?
Yes, Mr.-
You know, we had several public input sessions on this, Commissioner Link. I voted for your proposal, and I expect I'll vote for the contingency funding. But please, don't keep throwing staff under the bus on situations like this. Staff did exactly what we told them to do. They had the public input meeting, they got public input. It may not have been what you wanted to hear, but it's what, it's what staff presented to us. So, I would move forward with that, and let's go on with this meeting.
We're moving forward now. Item number fifteen is the Newton Street road closure between Meggs Street and Prince Avenue. Bill, I believe you have an ordinance for us?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend the 2016 annual operating and capital budget for Athens, Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding to the Transportation and Public Works Department for expenses related to the closure of a portion of Newton Street and for other purposes.
Mr. Brown.
I would like to make a motion, option two, that the Mayor and Commission do not approve the proposed closure of Newton Street between Meggs and Prince Avenue.
I second that.
Have motion second. I don't think there's any need for roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll go to item number sixteen, which is our jail inmate health services contract. Anyone wish to-
Put my baby out on the bathwater.
Address that. Do I have a motion?
May I move for the adoption of option one, A and B?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion, Mr. Gertz?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to support this motion. I just want to thank the manager's office for sending some follow-up information about the cost of mental health services that they provided. I certainly look forward to some future separate opportunity to reduce those costs, if one exists. But I think this is rational route.
Thank you. Okay, have motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have item number seventeen. We have commission-to-find options, but we've, let me look at this a minute. Okay, this has to do with our service delivery plan. Okay, what's y'all's pleasure?
I'll start. Commissioner Gertz and I are both addressing the same line item on this plan. There's quite a few things on here that, give me some pause, but this in particular. The line item six dash two oh five reads water future, water future new, in parentheses, raw water supply preliminary engineering and land acquisition design, twenty million dollars. That very clearly spells out an intention to seek out and do the planning and analysis and land acquisition for a reservoir. When you're putting a twenty million dollar price tag on something that includes engineering and land acquisition, that clearly says a reservoir. And we've heard from highly qualified scientists who repeatedly state all the reasons why reservoirs are bad, bad planning. You know, we see counties in the region abandoning their reservoir plans at a loss. And there's a big question as to what our future needs might be. And there's a lot of questions to be asked, and we haven't really seen the answers to any of those questions. And I am completely uncomfortable for supporting this item without having all those questions and all that analysis and all those options and all possible conservation measures explored and laid out on the table. And so, my commission-to-find option asks to change that line item to read enhanced future water supply and conservation analysis and planning design, and leave a two million dollar financial prospect for that. And that should allow the appropriate, and this comes back to us in five years. So, in five years, we can reconsider, and hopefully by then, all the information will be laid out on the table, and we can make some real choices about what our future water needs are and where they're going to come from.
Mr. Neesmith had asked, and I'll get back to you, Mr. Gertz, Mr. Neesmith.
I think we heard tonight what happens when you keep something in the dark until the last minute. Remember, the public had not seen this plan when we voted on it. It had not been published the first time, when we were considering it. So, we heard things tonight where people actually got to see the plan and give us some feedback that they never had the opportunity to give us before. I like the timing of the phosphorus polishing, for example. So, I have, I have concerns about the whole plan. And they're really just questions that need to be asked of staff, based on the feedback we're getting from some, from people who know quite a bit what they're talking about. So, I'm uncomfortable going forward at all.
Mr. Gertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I agree with, I think, some colleagues who've spoken tonight, and some who I've had individual conversations with, that there are a lot of questions that are forthcoming. And I certainly recognize that. I think staff recognizes that. And in their correspondence with us, they've noted that there's much, much, much more work to be done than has been done up until this point. And I'll be honest, I'm not sure if it's the thickness of my skull, or just the clarity of what I've heard over the last couple of weeks. When earlier supply conversations had been underway, and there'd been conversation about what that supply would mean, I certainly didn't realize that the supply was directed at drought activities, rather than for generalized ongoing supply needs. That had not been clear to me, but at the agenda-setting meeting, Manager Williams' conversation really clarified that, and I appreciate that. Now, in response to that, I then have to wonder, well, what's our level of supply need should we have another 2008 style event? What's our level of supply need should that kind of event come every five years? What's the likelihood, given that we know about our shifting climate, of that happening? What are the range of options that we have on an ongoing conservation basis and a sort of acute care basis, to use a medical term, to address that? You know, we've talked about a lot of opportunities, both formally and informally. Water reuse, expansion of gray water. And I think Peter had some questions about that at the podium. We locally approved gray water reuse a couple of years ago, in response to the state's building code allowing that. And so, I just wanted to make that clear for members of the public, if they weren't aware of that. So, given the number of questions that all of us need to have answered, what I've tried to do in constructing a commission-to-find option is not define a single path. And so, thus, I removed the land acquisition language and replaced it with future water supply enhancements, and defined the cost type as research and design. A little variation from Commissioner Link's commission-to-find option is that I left the cost at twenty million dollars, because I don't know what a strong water reuse operation would involve. I don't know what utilizing some of our existing water facilities, you know, should we deepen Lake Chapman at Sandy Creek, what that would cost. Should we look at some of the other large lakes along Highway 29, you know, if in fact, the goal is just kind of getting us through that extreme drought environment? I don't know what that would cost. I don't have the basis, and I don't believe any of us do, to change the cost allocation for this by that order of magnitude. So, that's why I put this commission-to-find option, so that it reads in very general terms. And I think it's been stated earlier, any specific capital expenditures have to be approved by this body. And I would anticipate, given our desires for transparency, that they would happen following very explicit work sessions.
Absolutely. Mr. Hambly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And I'd just like to follow up on Commissioner Gertz, what he just said. You know, November of last year, we voted for the specific elements in this plan. And this is how we do it, every five years, you vote for the elements in the plan, and then you vote for, you know, staff then goes and takes what we voted on, those elements, back in November, and says, okay, I need to put a price tag associated with these. And that's, that's what they did. So, they're doing their job in giving us that price tag. And all of those price tag items will come back before us. Certainly, we're not just going to spend twenty million dollars, or tell staff to go spend twenty million dollars and not tell us what's going on with it. We're just not going to do that. And staff's not going to do that. So, I hope they don't do that. But the other component of this, I just wanted to, since we're talking about the finances part of it, I know it was mentioned that everybody's water bill would go up twenty-eight bucks a month. And I don't, I don't see how that's, was it twenty-eight bucks a month, or twenty-eight bucks a year?
Year.
Oh, okay. Because it's only, from my calculations, it'll, you know, basically, if you're on water and sewer, it's three thirty-one a month for normal use.
But that's not totally, that's not totally a result of the service delivery plan.
It's, the water rates are based on the service delivery plan, what we vote on tonight. Yes, ma'am? Yeah.
Mr. Sims.
Clark County is very fortunate, the citizens of Clark County are very fortunate to have one of the best public utility organizations in the state of Georgia. You know, a lot of things that the EPA does, we do it first, and they actually ask us to let us follow, let them follow our plan. This is going to be part of the budget. This, you know, the service delivery plan is part of, and when we do finish the budget process, it goes into this part as well. Again, we're making, we've decided that twenty million dollars is going to build a reservoir. That's what everybody walked up to that podium and said, oh, you're going, it's going to take a whole lot more than twenty million dollars. Being on the Upper O'Conne Water Basin Authority, serving with the mayor, we are fortunate to be partners with three other counties that do have a quality water reservoir that serves the three, the four counties. But primarily, it's really serving more of the three other counties than it does Clark County, because for the most part, most of the water that we use comes out of the middle and Upper O'Conne rivers. Because of the quality of the people that we have working for us, we use water better than most. We have an excellent water conservation program, and I don't see us doing anything less. But to sit around and put in a number that, we don't know whether it's going to be twenty million or two hundred million, if we were to ever get to that point. But water reservoirs are worst-case scenarios. And I get a monthly report, I don't know whether all of us do or not, from our Bear Creek reservoir, and it is constantly at full pool, six hundred and ninety-five feet. You know, we, I heard some people talk about evaporation, evaporation. But every month that I get that report, it's sitting right at six hundred and ninety-five feet. So, apparently, the evaporation process doesn't take place up at Bear Creek. You know, maybe it takes place somewhere else, but at Bear Creek, it's constantly, that's been a constant. So, you know, I think sometimes we get into this, let's scare everybody kind of thing. This is not about scaring, this is about preparation. This is about us being prepared for the worst-case scenarios if they happen. Like I said, we are fortunate that when we had the last real severe drought, that we had gotten to the point where we were about to start distributing water on an individual basis, basically allocating to each organization how much water they could use. Thank heavens it rained, and that situation alleviated itself. But this is preparation. This is not going to be anything that our staff is going to do without permission of this board. So, for us to, you know, keep getting all flighty about twenty million dollars, twenty million dollars is not, is not a drop in the bucket. I happen to be the chairperson of, when we built those three, those three record, water reclamation projects, and we actually had it set up where we were able to, be able to expand when we get to the phosphorus situation that we're talking about now. So, it has been prepared for us to be able to make those expansions. So, I hope that we will be level-headed in this and move forward with making this part of our budget for this coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Mr. Gertz?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make a motion for the commission-to-find option presented by Commissioner Gertz.
I'll second that motion.
I'd like to make the substitute motion for my CDO with the two million dollar budget allowance.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the substitute. And, but there, our substitute motion reduced the budget by two million dollars, but it didn't address the eighteen million difference.
Two, two million dollars to remove the land acquisition allowance from it, and to address enhanced future water supply and conservation analysis and planning. You'll note that none of the line items within this budget use the word conservation at all. There are a couple items that might vaguely address it. The meter management, that theoretically should conserve. The North O'Conne reuse facility, that should conserve. But, you know, there's more we could be doing, and I feel like this is the line item place where it should be done with some, some clear research on what more we can be doing. You know, we've added thousands and thousands of bedrooms with bathrooms attached to them in our recent years. And we haven't changed our building code to require any stricter conservation measures. So, that's one thing we could be exploring, just as an example.
Mr. Hambly.
Madam Mayor, again, I would just like to say what our staff has done. In our water department, the word conserve is ingrained in everybody's mind and in everybody's actions. I mean, I see it all over, all over that public access TV, all over billboards. But we also see it in the daily water usage that our water department has led the citizens to do. Blaine, can you tell me, before the drought, what was our daily water usage?
I can't remember the peak, but it was much greater than it was now.
It was about twenty million gallons a day.
It was eighteen to twenty million.
And now, what is it, twelve?
Twelve, that's right.
So, to suggest that our water department isn't encouraging any sort of conservation measures, or this, and it's just, like I said, it's ingrained in them, and they're doing that, Commissioner Link. And I'd like to go ahead and make a call for this, for this vote.
I have one more comment.
I've made a motion.
We have motion, we have motion called, we had the question called.
I'll second that.
And this is substitute, and we have motion second, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back to our substitute motion.
I have no, please.
Ma'am.
No.
No one to call.
Oh.
No one to call.
Oh, no one to call. Okay.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Okay, we're back to the substitute motion now. Will you call the roll, Ms. Bratton? And maybe we need to re-
I was going to say Blaine.
Restate what the motion, substitute motion is. And that was yours, Mr. Gertz, I believe? No. Oh, it was Ms. Link, okay. That's why we need to-
Okay. Amend item six dash two oh five, water future new raw supply preliminary engineering and land acquisition design, twenty million dollars, to read enhanced future water supply and conservation analysis and planning design, two million dollars.
Okay, are you also changing the total for the, for the project, reducing it by eighteen dollars?
Yeah, reduce that total by the eighteen, eighteen million.
Okay, because I want our dollars to balance this time. Okay, we have substitute motion on the floor. You call the roll, Ms. Bratton.
Link.
Yes.
Wright.
No.
Bailey.
Yes.
Neesmith.
No.
Hamby.
No.
Vale.
No.
Harrod.
Nope.
Dickerson.
Nope.
Sims.
No.
Gertz.
No, ma'am.
Two yes, eight no.
Okay, we are back to our-
Original motion.
Original commission-to-find option. So, did we get a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's do a roll call vote on that one, Ms. Hambly. I mean, I married you off, Jean.
That Ms. Hambly should have gone upstairs tonight, really.
I want to know if Ms. Hamby's happy with her date this evening.
She's very happy. So-
I can't get through the night without that.
So, the-
Ms. Gertz, please.
The commission-to-find option that I've presented takes project six dash two oh five, and it modifies the project name to future water supply enhancements. Again, this is very general language, and I'll say, just editorially speaking, I envision this to include the prospects for all kinds of water supply, including conservation efforts. And it also changes the cost type to research and design. It eliminates the land acquisition language, but retains the twenty million dollar figure, given that there are lots of questions that none of us in this room, I believe, know about what costs would be associated with any activities, including both new supply enhancements that don't exist right now, gray water reuse, or conservation. So-
So, you're really not eliminating the possibility of anything?
No.
Okay. Roll call, Ms. Bratton.
Gertz.
Yes.
Link.
No.
Wright.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Neesmith.
Yes.
Hamby.
Yes.
Vale.
Yes.
Harrod.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Nine yes, one no.
Okay, we have our service delivery plan. Okay, so we'll go to item number eighteen, which is our park facilities improvements. Bill, I believe you have an ordinance for us?
Yes, an ordinance to amend the special purpose local option sales tax, 2011 program budget, so as to provide additional funding for the special purpose local option sales tax, 2011, project number sixteen, park facility improvements, and for other purposes.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve option one, A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Man, I can't believe we moved through that one so fast. Item number nineteen is our pavement maintenance project. We have a commission-to-find option from Ms. Link.
Yeah, this is simply to remove number five, East Washington Street, from the ACC capital slash SPOS rehabilitation list for analysis as direct- slash SPOS rehabilitation list for analysis as directed in the agenda item that we voted on previously, the Downtown Master Plan Implementation Committee report. The verbiage from that report says, "A request that the manager's office direct staff to reexamine streets that comprise the downtown business districts, specifically Clayton and Washington Streets, and develop concepts and cost estimates that address pedestrian safety, traffic patterns, business delivery functionality, infrastructure connectivity, and aesthetic appeal using Downtown Master Plan and anticipated downtown public health study as inputs." This simply removes Washington Street from next year's pavement maintenance in the hopes of delaying it till after this analysis is done, so hopefully we can implement some of the changes that might be suggested in the analysis.
Mr. Hamby.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt the CDO.
And I'll second it, but I'm hoping you will add an amendment to that motion that will enable staff to, since we're moving Washington for this year, to enable staff to look at Barber Street, was it Barber Street from, which was next on that deferred list, if you remember.
Yeah.
So, or it's, I don't know if it's next, but it's comparable to the price tag that is on that deferred list for Washington Street.
Mr. Williams, what do you like?
That's correct, Commissioner, and staff would support that recommendation. And to be specific, that's Barber Street between Prince and Cleveland Avenue, it'd be added to the FY17 PNP.
It's about the same amount of cost as what Washington Street.
That makes sense, yes. I'll gladly add that.
And I'll gladly second it again.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Everybody understand what it is? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great.
Madam Mayor, I move the suspension of rules.
Thank you. Have a motion for suspension of rules, we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the list of, coming from the nominating committee, the Airport Authority, the Board of Health, the Classic Center Authority, the Hearings Board, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Planning Commission.
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, and, and I will let you know what those appointments are on our Airport Authority, Bain Smith for a four-year term, James Pierce for a four-year term, Robert Wigglesworth to finish a partial term that will end on 6/30/17, Board of Health Patricia Moore for a partial term, and Brenda Hardman for a partial term. Classic Center Authority, Richard Boone, four-year term, Charlie Maddox, four-year term, Hearings Board, David Ellison, four-year term, Sharon Bailey, four-year term.
Bradley.
What is it, Bradley, okay, what does it?
Bailey.
Bailey, okay. It's getting late. Historic Preservation Commission, Danny Bass, for a three-year term, Planning Commission, Maxine Esom for a five-year term, and Jeffrey Scarborough for a five-year term. Congratulations, folks, and thank you for being willing to do this. So we'll now go, go to.
Madam Mayor, at this time, since it is 9:15, we could have it on a schedule.
Y'all would like to have a break?
Take a break before we start deliberations on our planning.
Great. Order, please. Is it working? Is the sound working? Can you? Can y'all hear the sound yet? Okay. It's, it's turned on, but I don't know what's happened. It's not, yeah. So sound working, yeah, okay. We're gonna call our meeting back to order, and, and before we go into our public input on our planning items and, and deliberation on those, I'd like to ask David Clark if he could come in and be here with us for a minute?
He's hiding. He said he's gone.
He's not gone. Oh, he's, David. David, I just wanted to ask you to come back in so that we could give you an official goodbye and thank you for the work you've done for us, and not make you have to wait through all the rest of the meeting, because, because any part that you have input in is already over. But I want to personally tell you how much I appreciate the work you've done, but I'm, I'm particularly impressed by the fact that I can send you an email at 2:00 in the morning, by 2:30, I've got an answer back. And, and literally, it's happened before. I'll have, I'll, I'll wake up for some reason, I'll start reading my email, I'll have a question from a constituent forwarded to David, and I will get almost an immediate answer back. And I've told him I didn't expect him to work 24 hours a day, but I really appreciate the dedication you had to your job, so thank you, David. You'd like to say something?
Madam Mayor, I must say, David's one of those guys, he's got a big job, he's got a lot to do, but I can send him an email and say, "I have a constituent problem," and he'll say, "Well, when, when do you wanna meet me there?" And I say, "When do, can you go?" He says, "15 minutes," and I go, and he's there on his motorcycle. He beat me there, of course, 'cause he's on his motorcycle, and, and he works on the problem, and he works on the problem, and he works, by the way, we need to finish that one. I hope you got your guy in line to take care of that one.
Well, I haven't seen, I haven't seen him in his leathers for a while, it's not what he's doing there now.
But he's, he's exemplary, and, and I hope whoever takes his place can strive to be as effective as he is.
In Fulton County, he's pretty lucky to get you.
Yes.
Anybody else wants to?
I'll just say, I, I worked with David for a few years before I left, and I don't know, 15 years maybe I've known David, and I think he's just improved, you know, tremendously, even after having, you know, worked with him on a professional basis with the county and stuff. I think he just continues to improve that department, and he's put good people in place underneath him, and I think that'll sustain the department, and obviously Fulton County's gain is our loss, but we wish you the best of luck.
Well, thank you all, and I certainly appreciate the kind words, but I would like to stress that my success really has a lot to do with the support that the elected officials have given me ever since I got here in 98, as well as what they have supported the department. For the most part, I've always understood why you voted the way you voted. May not have always agreed with it, but I certainly understood the decision-making process that you all go through, and I don't envy you at all to balance everything that you balance. As an engineer, I see a lot more things black and white, and you definitely have to work in the gray area, and so I certainly commend you for that. But I also want to recognize, the reason why I was able to be so successful is because we really do have good staff here. Public Works Staff does so many things behind the scenes to make things work, responding to the emergency calls that we have during weather, inclement weather times. The sacrifices that the staff makes makes my life very much easier, 'cause I can call anybody, all 95 of them, at any time, and every single one of them has always jumped and said, "Well, what can we do to help the community?" So my, my success really has a lot more to do with the staff that we have here in the community than, than what I can do myself. But thank you all.
Thank you, David. We're gonna issue.
Good luck, you very much. Good luck.
And we will now go, we'll now go to item, item number 21. In our zoning items, we handle item by item, we'll have the public input, and then we'll come behind the rail for deliberation and vote, and then we'll go to the next item. So, and, and on our planning items, we have 10-minute timeframes, but those have to be signed up for in advance, and Mr. Jim Warrens has signed up for the 10 minutes on item number 21, so if you would like to come forward, Mr. Warrens.
My name is Jim Warrens, my address is 244 East Washington Street. I don't think I'm gonna be using anywhere near the 10 minutes, which I'm sure all of y'all will be grateful for. I'm here on behalf of the project at 100 Prince. In commercial transactions, a lot of different pieces have to come into play, and they have to all come together at the same time, or the project doesn't work. 100 Prince was well on its way, it's been a tremendous collaboration with the entire community, staff, and the developer and his team. Unfortunately, late last week, he had three different situations crop up that impacted this project, any one of which he probably could have dealt with and moved on, but to have all three of them happen almost simultaneously has caused a need to reconfigure the project if it's going to go forward. Urban, Holmes Urban remains committed to the basic concept and framework of the plan that you have seen and has been shown to the, to the public and was approved by the Planning Commission. However, under the provisions of the Athens-Clark County Code, tonight, I would ask you to approve the requested change to the future development map, but to send the zoning component of this back to the Planning Commission. They need to reconfigure this plan. When that's done, if we can figure out a way to satisfy the three things that have cropped up, our first step will be to do what we did in the past, and that is to meet with the neighborhoods. I think they need to see the changes first. There's been good communications, and I don't want to do anything to impact that adversely. Once we meet with them, get their input, make the adjustments, get drawings, of course, we'll resubmit it to the Planning Commission, and then it would come back to this body for approval. As I said, this has been a very collaborative thing, everybody's been very enthusiastic about it, we'd like to keep that alive, and I just would appreciate it if you would send the zoning component back to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warrens. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? We'll, it will be only the three minutes. Okay, CNN will come behind the rail. Mr. Gertz, I believe this is in your district, would you like to start us?
It is, Madam Mayor. I had a procedural question. Bill, will this require two separate votes? If, if we were to follow the route suggested by?
That's, we normally do that, yes.
Okay, okay.
The first one would be on the future development map.
Do you wanna read the ordinance, or?
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the official future development map of Athens-Clark County by changing the designation of the approximate 6.201 acre tract of land comprised of two parcels of land at 134 Prince Avenue and 134 Child Street, currently designated as community institutional to downtown and for other purposes. The next is an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning the parcel of land at 134 Prince Avenue from CO Commercial Office to CDWEPD Commercial Downtown Westian Downtown Design Area Plan Development, and rezoning the parcel of land located at 134 Child Street from CO Commercial Office Zoning with Condition to RM3 PD Mixed Density Residential Plan Development and for other purposes.
Thank you. And, and before we go to, to voting on these items, Mr. Hamby has, has let me know that, that he's recusing himself of conflict of interest. He has an employment relationship with this project, so, Mr. Gertz?
I'd like to first make a motion to approve the change in future land use as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Have motion, have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Mayor, I'd next like to make a motion to send the zoning component of this request back to the Planning Commission for future revisions.
Have motion second. Mr. Sims, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, we're now at item number 22, who's, is the request? Thank you, Mr. Warrens. Request from the Kroger Company as, as an agent for the Kroger Company. Let me make sure I understand what this one is. Okay, Mr. Harrod, do you, do we have ordinances first?
We do, then we need to do public input.
Okay. Do we have too many things going on? Item number 22, which, which is the, is the redevelopment of, that's what I was trying to read to make sure, because we have two Kroger items on here, the redevelopment of the Kroger on Barnett Shoals Road. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to that item? Yes.
Mayor, Commission, my name is Aron Hawkins with Kroger and the Real Estate Department. I'm sorry I did not sign in, but I think it'd only take me a few minutes. I just wanted to, first, before I talked about the store, the development, I wanted to thank Athens-Clark County staff. This is a big project for us. I think we started with 18 waivers, and we've worked that down to either four or five, and that was a lot of communication and, and work, and I'd just like to thank the planning staff for that. I briefly wanted to just talk about the store, the development. I think everyone knows about it at this point, but our existing store, College Station, is 57,000 square feet, built in 1984. I think everyone who looks at it today can probably tell it was built in 1984. We've had a lot of discussions with the owner of that shopping center about redeveloping and cleaning it up and putting in a new parking lot. Those didn't go anywhere. We had an opportunity, when Kmart closed, to try to buy the shopping center so that we could do this redevelopment project. We are under contract today, and what we have planned is something absolutely special, we feel. We will have the ability to, the phase one of this project would be to tear down the Kmart while our existing store remains open, and we would build a 116,000-square-foot Kroger store, very similar to the store at Highway 72 and 29 that we built in the northeast near Athens Tech. All the same departments. One thing different that this store would be, would stand apart for this store would be the addition of a service that Kroger calls Click List that gives customers the ability to buy their groceries online, pick a time, and then a designated parking space in the parking lot. You pull up, and our associates will bring them out to your car, load them in your trunk for $4.95 is the cost for that, which, I've got three kids, so I'll probably never go into another Kroger store again. So the store's gonna be exciting. The, the development itself is probably gonna be in two phases. One phase, our new store, the second phase would be the demolishing of our existing store and the shops. We do have some leases that are in place for the tenants, that we're gonna honor those leases. We haven't started any negotiations with them yet, but the new development will include, you know, new asphalt, new lighting, we're bringing the trees to the front, to the parking lot, so you could actually see them. Pedestrian walk, walking paths throughout the development will be raised, stop signs, so it'll be safe pedestrian access through the development. We've got bicycle parking, we've got electric charging station, we're proposing a nine-pump fuel center within the development as well. Two out parcels will be included, we're hoping for some good restaurants, we have not started marketing those parcels yet, but all in all, we think it's a really good, exciting development, and we look forward to it, and it'd be great if we could get approval.
Ms. Hawkins, thank you. I think you had some architectural drawings, would you like to hold them up so the Commissioners can see them?
It's just, just a rendering of what the plan looks like.
The layout, yeah, great. Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak to us about this project? Okay, we'll come behind the rail. Ordinances, Mr. Bearman?
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning seven parcels of land at 2301 College Station Road, 1485 College Station Road, and 2000 Barnett Shoals Road, and a portion, a portion of the parcel of land at 2020 Barnett Shoals Road from CG Commercial General to CGPD Commercial General Plan Development and for other purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Harrod, do you wanna?
I, I thank you very, very much, Madam Mayor. I won't be too lengthy in my comments, since we are, we are getting on, and I think this is a great project, I think it will very much improve that particular shopping center. There's lots of great things that are gonna be going in with regards to this redevelopment, so I am fully in support of, fully in support of the, of the proposal. As you do know, that at the agenda-setting meeting, I did mention the, the question or the possibility or the suggestion of some public art out there, and I'm very happy to hear that Kroger is certainly receptive to that, it certainly would not be a, a condition of approval, but I'm glad to hear that, both with Brad's conversations with Mr. Hawkins and my conversations with him as well, that that's something that Kroger would at least be interested in and has done on one of their developments in Atlanta, so I think it's a great opportunity that could be a, a win-win for the, the community and for, for Kroger. People like shopping in places that have a sense of place to them, so I appreciate their openness to that suggestion. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve with the conditions recommended from the Planning Commission.
Second. Have a motion and second, is there any discussion?
I actually just wanna make a comment as well. Ron met with Andy and I back in the late latter part of last year and was very interested in getting feedback from the citizens, and of course, it's in Andy's district, but a lot of people in my area shop there, that's really the, that and Walmart are the two on our side. And, and I appreciate the effort that you went to, to, to increase tree plantings, I think that's gonna be awesome, 'cause there's not a lot of tree, there aren't really any trees in that, on that, in that area where Kroger sits. And might I suggest that the mural say, "East Side Rocks"? No, I'm kidding, seriously, but anyway, I'm, I'm glad to see a fuel station, too, so that'll be great. Thank you.
Sounds like a great addition to our community. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Look forward to it. Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Item number 23 is also a request from Kroger, and this is on Mr. Hamby's. Item number 23 is also a request from Kroger, and this is on Mr. Hamby's side of town. Would you like to address that, Mr. Hamby?
Sure, I would. I don't know if we want to.
Oh, excuse me, we've got to have public input first. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Hawkins?
Sure.
And I'll try to be brief here as well. I know it's late. We've got an existing store at Alps and Baxter that we opened in 2004. We completed an $8 million expansion of that store in 2013. Great facility for us. It's been widely successful since the expansion. The number one complaint that we get from our customers there are, where do I redeem my fuel center points? Customers don't want to travel to Oconee County and our store on Epps Bridge, so since that expansion, we've been looking for a site where we could add a fuel center to complement the store. And for us, it's really a big deal because we do offer millions of dollars of savings in our fuel business, and it brings people back to our store whenever we have a fuel center. Stores that have fuel centers do better than stores that don't. I mean, that's, to sum it up. We found this site at Baxter Street and Baxter Drive a couple of years ago when we first started talking about it, and what we've proposed is a nine-pump fuel center, and there is an 850-square-foot store that is up against the street. That's not typical for us. Typically, it's just a small kiosk of 176 square feet. We work with staff, and we understand that there are requirements here that require a certain amount of floor area ratio. Unfortunately, the canopy of the fuel doesn't count, so we did everything that we could in our power to make this 850 square feet as unique as possible to bring something to Baxter Street. We went and spoke with Jittery Joe's about potentially them coming in. We went and spoke to Starbucks. There wasn't interest from any party, either party. I've got a letter from Jittery Joe's, and he explained that he wasn't interested. He didn't feel it was a very good corridor for retail. But what I did after I got that information is I went back to our group and said, what can we do to make this unique? So, what we have, I think, is pretty exciting. We're proposing this 850-square-foot store that will include the selling of bread, milk, eggs, coffee. We added some outdoor seating, some benches, so we're doing the best that we can to complement the fuel center, but also bring something to Baxter Street, which we think would bring some energy to the street, add activity for sure. I know it's not ideal what planning was looking for, but it'll definitely help, we think, in security with some lighting, and it'll definitely help our store as well. I mean, it keeps customers engaged and going, coming back to our store on Baxter Street. So, with that, you know, any questions you have, I'm available to answer as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, CNN will come behind the rail, and Mr. Hamby, this is your district.
Thank you, Mayor. And certainly some points were made by Mr. Hawkins that I'll share, that this is a challenging site. It's probably challenging to have built on in the first place, but it's challenging because it's been empty for over 16 years now, and that in itself creates some situations for the street, for Baxter Street. The thing that I think will be helpful with this project is it will increase the activity along Baxter Street. Mr. Hawkins is right, these fuel pumps for Kroger, when you redeem your points, are certainly become destination points, and that is, it's good for Kroger, but you do save money. And since it is a destination point, it's good that the destination would be here in Athens where our sales tax dollars and transportation tax dollars, if we still get those, I don't know if we do or not, but would stay here in Athens. And then the other component of this is, certainly this is a new model for Kroger that's going to offer some different amenities for residents that live near there. I can understand why Jittery Joe's wouldn't want to go there because they have a shop right up the street from there, so that makes sense to me. But I'm glad that it will offer some amenities and a new model for Kroger, and I will go ahead and make a motion to approve this rezoning request.
I'll second. We need to have the ordinance read. We have motion in second.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning the parcel of land at 1065 Baxter Street consisting of two parcels to be combined from CG Commercial General to CNPD Commercial Neighborhood Plan Development and for other purposes.
Thank you. Ms. Brantley, I think we probably should have a roll call on this.
Can I offer one comment?
Sure.
I had some reservations about this project, mostly because of the same issues the planning commission had with the floor area ratio, but I recognize it's a really difficult site, and, you know, I feel like the pros outweigh the cons, so I'm happy to support it. I did have some reservations, but I think it'll bring some traffic to Baxter Street and hopefully increase business along the whole corridor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Ms. Brantley, roll call.
Hamby?
Yes.
Vale?
Yes.
Harrod?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gertz?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Hawkins. Thank you. Okay, we will now go to item number 24, which is the request from Dewberry Engineers. And is this, is Mike signed up for this one? Gene? This is? Oh, he's signed, okay. You're already at the podium.
I swear I signed up.
So, yeah, so you have your 10 minutes, Mr. Morris.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Mike Morris. I reside at 598 Fortson Road here in Athens. Tonight, it's my pleasure to represent the owner of this project, Walton, Georgia LLC, and the applicant Dewberry Engineers. I know there may be some questions on this project, so we've got folks from Walton and folks from Dewberry. Teresa Crisp is here from Dewberry. She's the project engineer and kind of the quarterback here, so we, I think we've brought in the people who can answer any questions that you may have. Winslow Park is a 215-acre planned development running out on the Atlanta Highway in the western portion of the county. The purpose of the request tonight is to amend an existing PD and, of course, amend the underlying zoning classifications. Those who have followed this proposal from its inception several months ago know that the proposal has come a long, long way. It has been refined and improved quite a bit over the past few months. Really would like to thank Brad and the planning staff and the Public Works Department, and we owe special thanks to Commissioner Neesmith, who has been very instrumental in helping us work through some of the issues that we have. We're pleased to come to you tonight with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the planning staff and a recommendation of approval with conditions from the planning commission. We certainly accept the conditions that were imposed by the planning commission and ask that tonight you approve the request with these conditions. This planned development was originally, the property was originally rezoned in 2004 as a planned development. It had a substantial rework in 2008 as a planned development, but it has set vacant all these years. And the reason it's set vacant all these years is sometimes, as it happens, the project looks good on paper, but you can't build it. So, tonight, we are presenting a plan that we think will remake Winslow Park into a viable development, which will supplement the redevelopment of the Atlanta Highway corridor. The proposal tonight includes some significant improvements over the existing plan, which include reducing the single-family units from 468 to 325, totally eliminating the hotel units, decreasing the multifamily units from 482 to 475, reducing the commercial area from 17 acres to 15.7 acres, and increasing the green space from 80 acres to 86.5 acres. So, we think that the proposal tonight is a significant improvement. I do know there have been some concerns expressed about the business model of Walton, and I hope tonight that I can alleviate some of those concerns for you. The Walton Group of Companies has been in business for over 30 years, and they currently manage over $4.1 billion, with a B, dollars' worth of predevelopment and development assets in North America. They specifically target the North American growth corridors, and at the end of 2015, they had over 99,000 acres of land under management, 145 master planned communities, and 22 projects under development. Walton is very capable of bringing this proposal to fruition. The biggest concern that I have heard when we talk about the business model of Walton is what happens if Walton were to sell the project or sell a portion of the project to somebody else? How can we assure our community that we're going to get a quality development out there? And I think these concerns have been addressed by what I view as a very critical component of this request. Working with our planning staff and with some very knowledgeable community leaders, Walton has voluntarily developed and submitted a binding, comprehensive set of design guidelines to govern all the development and construction of this project. So, we as a community can be assured that no matter who ultimately builds or develops any or all of this project, we'll be bound by these guidelines. Y'all all know me, I've been involved with a lot of projects, but I think this is as comprehensive a set of guidelines, design guidelines, as I have ever been associated with, and we believe that these guidelines will be a big step in assuring the quality development and construction of the project. Finally, there have been some concerns about the timing of the project. We can all agree that this is a large project by any standard. As a community, one of our recent focuses has been the redevelopment of the Atlanta Highway. We can also all agree that that redevelopment will take place over a number of years and not over a number of months, and I think the same will be true of Winslow Park. If all goes according to plan, I think you'll see the commercial spaces develop first, followed by the multifamily and single-family units. When it's developed, Winslow Park will feature affordable housing in a prime location near the Caterpillar Plant. It will add significant rooftops to that portion of the county, and we know what rooftops bring. Those rooftops will only add to the appeal of the Atlanta Highway to future commercial and retail businesses. We firmly believe that this project will be an integral part of the redevelopment of the Atlanta Highway corridor. So, tonight, we respectfully request that you approve the request with the included conditions imposed by the planning commission. We do have representatives from Walton and from Dewberry here that can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Anyone else wish, and the public wish to speak to this item? Okay, we'll come behind the rail. Will you read the ordinance for us, Mr. Bearman?
The first is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to amending the official future development map of Athens Clark County by changing the designation of the approximate 214.79 acre tract of land comprised of 10 parcels of land at 04500, 4530, 4550, 4560, 4564, and 4594 Atlanta Highway, and 125, 135, and 145 Bedgood Road, currently designated as Community Center Mixed Use and Corridor Business, DeCorridor Residential and Corridor Business and for other purposes. The next is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning the approximate 214.79 acre tract of land comprised of 10 parcels of land at 04500, 4530, 4550, 4560, 4564, and 4594 Atlanta Highway, and 125, 135, and 145 Bedgood Road from CGPD Commercial General Plan Development and CG Commercial General to CGPD Commercial General Plan Development, RM2 PD Mixed Density Residential Plan Development, and RS5 PD Single Family Residential Plan Development and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. Mr. Neesmith?
Thank you. I need to, I need to fill in the blanks a little bit here so everybody knows what to expect, what this is and what it isn't. When, when Mr. Morris invited me to meet with Terry, and I think Rick was there, I know Terry was, a few months ago when this was first being discussed, they were very upfront about the fact that their business model wasn't one where they're going to get a development approved, and then they're going to start building. They were very clear upfront that what they do is a little different in that what they do after they buy the land, they syndicate it, which means they sell shares of it, undivided shares of it, to investors. Then they, parallel with that, they do what they call entitlements, which is what we're doing tonight, is the planned development, is what they, in their lingo, are entitlements to that property, which make it very saleable, both to their investors and to people who will then come develop it. So, the next step in this, after we provide them with the entitlements, is they will then, and actually I believe they already are, marketing to invest, to developers who will come in and buy pieces of this land and build. Now, I recognized immediately that what's important in that business model is that we have a very, very tight planned development, that the development is good in terms of its encroachment into neighborhoods, its open area, its streets, its landscaping, all those things, and that the design guidelines, which is just as important, are tight. They're not a suggestion to the developer, they're tight. Over a period of a few weeks or months, they got the picture about what I was after because I wasn't going to support anything in this way without these design guidelines that were very, very tight, and they jumped right in. They didn't hesitate. They went right after it. They worked very hard with Brad and his staff. Brad, Brad was particularly personally involved in a lot of this, I'm pretty sure, and Mike did a fabulous job, too. Mike, maybe I'm saying the wrong thing here, but Mike not only represented his client, he represented this community, because the way to help his client was to represent to them what this community's values are, and he knows what our values are. So, I think, Mike, that you covered sort of the questions that I had. There was one I think that's worth, worth bringing up. Rick Schmarak, who's the, he's the Senior Planning and Development Manager with Walton Development and Management. Commissioner Harry brought up a couple of issues. Come to the, if it's okay, may I ask him to come to the podium?
Please, please.
And they were worth, they were worth looking into, and I did a lot of research when, when the business model and maybe some events that have happened locally came to my attention. So, I'll just ask you, Rick, one of the projects that's been in the paper a lot is called the Old W4 Farm in Jackson County. It's a 1,600-acre opportunity, shall we say. Can you tell us the difference between this, this plan and that one, this situation and that one?
Absolutely. First off, they're two different markets. One's in Jackson County, one obviously is here in Athens, and also the size of the projects. The project we have in, in Jackson County, there's 12 years of supply of vacant developed lots that are available, and those vacant developed lots are being sold to builders at less than the cost to actually build those lots. So, until those vacant developed lots are absorbed, there's no incentive to build new, new subdivisions or new developments because, quite frankly, the builders are not going to build on them. So, one of the big differences is also the lifestyle and amenities. Here at Winslow Park, I mean, you're close to UGA, you're close to Caterpillar Plant, you have existing shopping and amenities that are available. So, they're very different markets.
All right. So, if this, if this is approved tonight, what will your next steps be in regards to this property?
We're going to continue doing what we're doing right now, which is actively trying to get builders and retailers to commit to the site. Once we get commitments from, from the builders, we're able to obtain funding and move forward with the project.
And who's actually going to be doing the development of the property?
Well, developer that actually has commitments from the builders and has funding. That may be Walton, it may be a joint venture between Walton and another developer, and it may be a completely different developer, but in any case, they're going to have to have commitments from builders and have lending obtained.
I understand Walton owns this property outright.
Yes, it was paid for in cash, so Walton is 100% owner of the property.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
So, we're not going to see anything happen immediately. It's going to take a long time, but I think we've got some people who have deep pockets, and they're motivated, and they've got a good plan. So, with that, I move that we, let's see, I first have to do a land?
Future land.
So, approve the future land use plan as Bill described it. It's my motion.
Have a second.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Neesmith reminded me of Madlock there for a minute, so that was, that was good.
You want to say something, Mr. Bearman?
Excuse me, I'd like to say something before we vote.
Excuse me, I'd like to say something before we vote. I am glad that there's strong interest in developing this area, and we do need development out there, but I am dubious about this company's business model. My research on Walton's business practices has pointed to the company being exploitive of the communities that it goes into and its investors. So I cannot support the land, the change in the future business, the future?
Land use.
Land use, or the, the other requests that they have before us. I just wanted to state that.
If you don't mind.
Ms. Dickerson, then, Ms.
Well, I have a question. I'm not sure it relates to them, to the land issue. So should I hold, hold off or ask now?
Yeah, let's let Mr. Ham be, and then we'll come back. Mr. Ham.
And, and just saying, just something that's come to my mind, and I'm not real sure what previous projects these folks have worked on, but what I do know is that they've brought to us a project that I hope will be done. And, and it seems like, based on what Mr. Morris is telling us and some of the folks here, it's going to be done. And, and that's what we, you know, we have a lot of people come before us for zoning stuff. Some of them get done, some of them don't. But what I do know about this is it's on Atlanta Highway, it's on a corridor that we're hoping to change a little bit. And, and, you know, I think they understand how this could be helpful to our community and helpful to Atlanta Highway, and, you know, irregardless of what may have gone on in other communities, what I know is what's brought before us today is a project that we need to vote, vote on based on its merits and how it will impact our community. And, and if it goes through, and I hope it does, and if it gets built, and I hope it does, it will have a good impact for, for this corridor.
Thank you. Ms. Dickerson.
Well, my question was, on page 266, right above Item 5, Grading and Drainage, there's a section that talks about the Transit Department, and it mentions that there will be, there are five transit stops through, through the development, and construction of those stops have to be approved, and basically, you know, we don't currently surface that area. So the only thing I'm thinking about is, you know, what are, what is the impact on our budget? What are, you know, I mean, I know stops aren't, you know, are the stops going to be paid for by the developer? Just general questions that, I mean, maybe those come back to us, I don't know. I guess I'm just trying to feel that out. That was my only question I'd see answered.
Kim, your address there?
The stops were coordinated with our Transit Department and would be installed and paid for by the developer at the time of construction.
But the actual expanding routes out there would be something we would pay for through fares, I mean, try to support through fares if we needed to. I mean, that's something Butch and them would have to come back to us.
We'd do a longer-term proposal based on need and rooftops.
Okay.
Thank you. The developer's not going, is not getting any assurance that they're grabbed by service, but it's just preparing for it. Mr. Neesmith?
Yeah, I want to address Commissioner Bailey's concern here. The, the business model they have is something that, that, that I've read about called land banking. And the very reason that I explain everything I just explained to you is because of what this land banking, banking kind of thing can do to disappoint a community. They, they buy an opportunity, they buy where the community is going, and they buy the land, and then they wait. All right? Well, they're buying a place where they're not going to, probably not going to have to wait very long, but think about what if we didn't pass this PD tonight? They would own a piece of property that has a PD they couldn't sell. It's, it's, it's too big, it's too complex, it's too expensive. So what they're, what they put together is a PD that appears to be marketable, as opposed to a PD that sat there for eight years and no one was interested in it. So, you know, if, if we don't do it, if we don't pass this, we're in much worse shape than we would be. They own the land, and it's syndicated. So I think, I think, yeah, so that's the.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call, Miss Bratton.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Harrod?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gertz?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
No.
None, yes, one, no.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're now going to Item Number 25.
No, we're going to, we've got to pass the.
Oh, I'm sorry, we've got to pass the, actual zoning.
So I have, I have moved, I move that we pass the zoning as recommended to us by the Planning Commission, and Brad, I understand we no longer need condition number one, which is a survey, that's already been met, according to the report. Survey with meets and bounds?
Okay, now, you read conditions as they appear on the ordinance or in the report?
In the report.
Okay.
Should I read the other ones?
The ordinance, yes. They're actually, it's down to just a total of five conditions?
Oh, okay. So we've taken out those conditions?
The rest of them have all been eliminated.
All right, very good. Then I'll, I'll move as, approve with the conditions that are in the, the report. Second.
It was a second?
Nevermind.
Okay.
The ordinance, that's in the agenda package with those conditions. Correct.
And Jim, let's do another roll call, please.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Gertz?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
No.
None, yes, one, no.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, Item Number 25 is the request from Charles Armentraut, and this is on plan development on Nellie B. Avenue. This is time we have public input on that.
My name is Charles Armentraut. I live at 996 Riverbend Parkway in Athens, Clark County, and I'm speaking on behalf of JD and Sons for this PD modification. This Triangle Plaza was developed in the late 1950s and evolved over time, and actually deteriorated to the point where in 1996, Athens, Clark County used HUD money and revitalized the entire shopping center, including code improvements. The, the site was non-conforming at the time, so the, it was zoned as a PD at that point because it was non-conforming. There are numerous property owners, and my client, JD and Sons, is one of the property owners, and is proposing to add approximately 1,000 square feet of warehouse space to his retail business. He's not proposing to add any additional retail space, just a warehouse, so that he can better manage his inventory. The, the planning staff has worked with us and wanted us to comply with numerous items that were in the original PD for the entire shopping center, but that weren't totally complied with in 1996. Mr. Desai, as the owner of JD and Sons, can do on his property what he wants to do, but he doesn't have any authority to spend or to do on other people's property that are part of the 1996 PD. So therefore, we sort of, we're requesting a modification of this PD to allow him to do on his parcel that he can control and build the 1,000-square-feet addition, and included in that some, a lot of landscaping improvements and other items that the planning staff asked us to put in there, and we have put in there. In fact, the Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously with those conditions, and I believe it's fair to say that I've already met with the planning staff, and we've complied with those conditions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Armentraut. Anyone else wish to address this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. We read the ordinance, Mr. Baereman.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending the existing plan development zone CNPD, Commercial Neighborhood Plan Development, on one approximate 0.23-acre parcel at 151 Nellie B. Avenue, Number 1, with an existing approximate 1.2-acre plan development at 151, 159 Nellie B. Avenue, and 585 Vine Street, and for other purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
I went by yesterday and looked at the property and had talked with the owner, and pretty much, you know, I mean, he has no problem with, you know, complying with whatever happens. At one point in time, we were talking about putting a tree out there in the parking lot, Brad. But, you know, with the number of trucks that come in there, the types of trucks, the sizes of trucks that come in there, and the amount of area that, the parking space that's there, it really would be kind of like putting a soap thum, just standing out there in the middle of some asphalt. So I don't, so that has been taken out, right?
I mean, there are four conditions still included in the ordinance, one of which says that they would have to meet the code requirements for overall canopy.
But they've got, you know, they can meet that on the, with the, on the side there, where they put the plantings, the trees, and the, and right there, as you go in the door, they're going to put some greenery there, even though it would do better as a park, as a parking space, but again, they're willing to comply with that.
That's my understanding, they're willing to comply with all the requirements.
Yeah. And with that matter, may I like to make a motion that we approve with the conditions set forth by the Planning Commission?
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In your post. Thank you, guys. All right, we're down to Item Number 26, which is Smith Planning Group, as agents for West Broad Holdings LLC, and I understand this is a medical office, it's on West Broad Street. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Bob Smith with Smith Planning Group, and I'm here on behalf of West Broad Holdings. The purpose of this request is really twofold, and it's to improve the patient and staff access to the existing Athens Orthopedic Clinic Imaging Center, and to bring the informal gravelled parking lot into compliance with ACC standards. This particular lot has been used as informal parking since sometime before 1993 and predates the current code. So this request, if approved, will bring the use into compliance with current code requirements. We are not requesting an increase in parking spaces beyond what is allowed by the code, and we are taking measures to protect adjacent residential uses by offering a binding site plan. The plan illustrates a vegetated buffer along the east and north, and in some areas of the buffer, it includes an opaque fence where the width of the buffer is not sufficient to meet, meet code requirements. And we, of course, accept the conditions the Planning Commission has recommended, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you, if you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is anybody else in the audience that would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. Would you read the ordinance, Mr. Baereman?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning the parcel of land at 1764 Old West Broad Street from RS8, Single Family Residential to CN, Commercial Neighborhood Zoning with Condition, and the parcel of land at 1774 Old West Broad Street from CG Commercial General to CN, Commercial Neighborhood Zoning with Condition, and for other purposes.
Ms. Lee, this is in your district, would you like to address it?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Smith for meeting with myself and a couple folks from the Normal Town neighborhood. You know, he, they did amend this plan somewhat they initially hoped to include the neighboring property, which has an existing single-family home on it, and there were some objections to losing another modest, moderate-income home in the area, and there's, there's a lot of activity in, in this area, and I think Mr. Smith's come up with a really nice plan. Not only are we going to get a sidewalk there, but there's, you know, a nice rain garden along the sidewalk's edge, and they've been really sensitive to keeping that buffer against the neighboring residential properties, and we're turning an empty gravel lot into, you know, a nicely-surfaced parking lot with, with some new plantings and buffers. So I move that we adopt this plan.
Have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
In your post. Okay. Thank you. We are now, Item Number 26, which is Smith Planning Group.
27.
27, I'm sorry. Looking, I'm reading 27, but saying 26. And is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, Mr. Smith, again?
Yes, hello again. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, my name is Bob Smith with Smith Planning Group, and it's my pleasure to represent Faith Christian Church here tonight. As you know, the subject of this special use request is to allow for the construction of a church. Churches are allowed in the AR zoning classification as a special use if, if specific conditions that are present in the code are met. We are asking for a waiver of the sidewalk requirement along the frontage of the parcel. There is not a sidewalk present along the entire length of the Cleveland Road loop. And the primary reason for this request is due to the lack of a sidewalk network along Cleveland Road and the desire to retain the rural character of the area. There are also some topographical and drainage challenges where the sidewalk would be installed. So in lieu of the sidewalk, we have agreed to conserve all trees that are six inches diameter at breast height and greater, that are within 50 feet of the right-of-way. This will serve to reserve the rural character of the road and vicinity, and I think the preservation of the trees outweighs the benefits of constructing a sidewalk along this section of Cleveland Road. We accept the conditions that the Planning Commission has recommended, and again, I'll be answering, answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to this item?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you on this evening. I'm Jerry Alexander, the pastor of Faith Christian Church, that looks forward to moving to 2245 Cleveland Road. We are very appreciative to Brad and to his staff and to the Planning Commission for working with us. We just simply seek to be a giving people to the community, not only to those who are in the Cleveland Road neighborhood, but to the Athens community at large. We seek to serve this present age, and that is to help the millennials and those who are intergenerational from the oldest members of our congregation and community to the very youngest. And by doing that, we are pledging to give ourselves to make the Athens, Clark County community a better one. Thank you so very much for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Okay, we'll come behind the rail. You have ordinances, Mr. Baereman.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to special use approval in the AR Agricultural Residential District on the approximate 22.72-acre parcel of land located at 2245 Cleveland Road and for other purposes.
Thank you. And this is Mr. Neesmith's district, I believe.
That's right. First of all, I support this wholeheartedly. The sidewalk waiver is perfectly reasonable on this road. It's a long stretch of road, and this sidewalk would be in the middle of nowhere and wouldn't be connected to for many, many years. I hope, unless, of course, we can get a sidewalk to Cleveland Road School. So, Mr. Turner, are there two motions?
Yeah.
One on the variance, second on the special use.
So I move that we, that we accept the variance waiving the sidewalk?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then I accept, move that we accept the special use permit.
I'll second that as well.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, for being here tonight. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I think I'd let you know in advance, I'd like to excuse myself now that all the voting is over.
I understood that you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Thank you for letting us know. Okay, at this point in time, this is the time that any citizen who wishes to address the commission may do so. I'll remind you that you have your three-minute limit, and.
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Sidney Bakas. I address PO Box 174, Athens, Clark County, and I am here to address three items related to the Lexington Road dump that were not on the agenda. The first is the failure to resolve the continuing problems at the dump, the most recent problems at the dump, and the fact that I've still not received any response for my request for the documentation of the safety of the sewage sludge that's being composted there. But before I get into that, I want to discuss something else related to the dump, and that is the lack of water conservation in the proposed expansion of the dump. And we heard from one of the commissioners how Athens, Clark County is droning on ad nauseam about water conservation, but in my opinion, that is restricted to residential water conservation, not in as industrial water conservation or in the structures that Athens, Clark County proposed dump expansion. I would also urge those commissioners who did not understand my earlier comment about the large evaporative loss that literally pulls water from the aquifer, de-watering the aquifer in response to evaporation, I would urge you to do what my university students did as a project, which is to take two jars of equal size, fill both with water, put a lid on one, leave the other uncapped, put them in the sun, and see how long it takes for the uncapped jar to become empty from evaporation. The reservoirs and other construction that was discussed earlier tonight is not a closed system with impervious sides, so that constant level of water that was referenced earlier by a commissioner is maintained by the de-watering of the aquifer that flows into that reservoir. So deepening existing lakes or ponds is not going to solve your water problem. So I ask you to refer to the comments that I sent you earlier, and to note that the Billups Grove Baptist Church and Dunlap Road Community is going to offer an opportunity to meet with staff in their church, preferably, they're shooting for June, to talk about the cessation of all composting operations at the Lexington Road Dump, the cessation of all methane recovery operations, the permanent closure of the dump and all associated operations at the site, the full financial compensation of the members and family of Dunlap Road Community and Church congregation.
Dr. Bakas, I'm sorry, your town said...
So please refer to my comments, and here is a hard copy to put into the record.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Commission. Greeting in the name of all that's good. I'm Alvin Shees. My mailing address is Post Office Box fifty-one forty-two, Athens, Georgia three-zero-six-zero-four. HACAD, Hancock Athens Coalition Against Displacement, request of the Mayor, Mayor's Office, and County Commissioners. Senior tax support, HACAD, is appearing before the Mayor and the Commissioners to request the support of the Mayor and the Commission for a property tax break for seniors irrespective of the status of homestead exemption. Also, we'd like to request, very respectfully, of the Mayor and Commission to consider placing three, his, three marquees to edify the neighborhoods of its African-American heritage, also, again, freeze the taxes on senior citizens, and develop a program for seniors to keep their homes in good repair through human and community development or other government programs. And at this time, I'd like for all of our supporters to please stand. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that being said, I'll step aside for one or two other speakers from the Coalition.
Good evening. My name is Reba L. Kimbrough. I live at two-thirty-four Rock Street Court. ICADE, represent Hancock Athens Coalition Against Displacement, represent, request of the Mayor's Office and the County Commissioners, senior tax support. ICADE is appearing before the Mayor and the Commissioners to request the support of the Mayor and the Commissioner for a property tax break for seniors in repeat of the status of the homestead exemption. For example, as noted in the Athens Banner Herald in two thousand and two, Clark residents who are sixty-five or older and own their own homes will have the amount of property taxes paid to school district fixed at the level established by two thousand and two home evaluation, or when the person bought the home if, after two thousand and two. ICADE is looking for a similar policy to be in, enacted to address the continual challenges older adults on fixing combs faced in this marketplace. Reference and see Athens Banner Herald and two thousand and two, and Clark County seniors have earned a break from property taxes. HTTP slash online Athens period com slash stories, August the twelfth, two thousand and ten.
Thank you, Ms. Kimbrough. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Nice long night. Tim Denson, two-ninety Midway Road, Athens for Everyone. Just want to talk about two pieces really quickly. First, it's exciting time. The budget has dropped. We're all excited about that. I'm sure you all are. And one of the things that we are hoping, but it's, it's hard for us to make clear, is we just want to make sure that the commission and the mayor and everybody is making so, is to, to make sure that the budget does cover a pay raise to anybody that's under the living wage, to ensure that all workers, including part-time and seasonal and temporary workers, are making at least ten dollars and seventeen cents per hour. There is an item, I know, under changes to employ compensation in the budget, that says that includes money to adjust ACCUG's pay table, so I'm hoping that that does cover all of those workers, including temporary and part-time. The second item I wanted to bring up was really just to thank Police Chief Freeman for focusing on a very important issue, and that was the backlog of rape kits that had been sitting for, some of them up to twenty years. Hundred-and-seventy-seven rape kits were discovered here in Athens Clark County last year, and this was a problem that was ongoing throughout the rest of the state, and I was very happy to hear this past week that all of the rape kits that, unfortunately, eleven were destroyed, and three could not be found because they've been sitting for so long, but the remaining had all been processed, as they should have been done, and that thankfully, you know, a new law has been put in place on the state level, ensuring that this problem doesn't happen here in Athens or anywhere else in the state. And I also commend Chief Freeman for taking that bill very seriously and actually pushing for it and advocating for the passage of it. But it still shows that, you know, there's still a lot more that needs to be done, and as the press release from the Police Department stated, "Our citizens and visitors expect and deserve a safe environment." And there's, of course, much more that we could be doing here in Athens Clark County. And I know that there are a lot of people pushing for that here, and I think that you might hear a little more about that tonight. But thanks for getting this done. Thanks to Police Chief Freeman, and let's keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denson.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Calhoun. I'm a University of Georgia student majoring in political science and women's studies. I'm here to advocate for an ordinance requiring all establishments downtown with a liquor license to put staff through a sexual assault prevention by standard training. This training could take place in the form of an online module or an in-person training that would not be extremely time-consuming, but it would be extremely effective and helpful for the safety of individuals downtown. We can use Asheville, North Carolina as a model for this because they have had success with this training. This is an initiative that is not only supported by groups like Athens for Everyone and organizations like The Cottage, but also by the university, especially the Women's Studies Department. There are a number of students who couldn't be here tonight who wanted to be because it is finals time, who are also hoping to advocate for this, and we also have some parents in attendance who think that this would be a good training to have take place. We're here to start a conversation about the, about training and the idea of an ordinance being put into reality. As a UGA student, this is important to me because I should feel safe in the city that I've come to call my home. I'd be happy to discuss this further with anyone who's interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun.
Hello, my name is Emma Elrod. I live at six hundred North Thomas Street, and I'm also a member of Athens for Everyone. I'm a student at UGA, I'm a women's studies major, and I'm also a pre-nursing student. I'm a twenty-two-year-old college student. I'm a victim of sexual assault. The time that I've spent here in Athens, I've never felt comfortable going downtown by myself, walking there, or just being in a bar by myself. This is because I know that if anything were to get out of hand, or if I became uncomfortable, I would have no one to turn to for help. As a twenty-two-year-old woman, I should not have to live in fear of being sexually harassed or assaulted when I'm simply trying to take a break from stress or have some fun. One in five women and one in sixteen men are sexually assaulted while in college. These statistics are well-known, so why does the local government not implement a program college students could rely on for aid in harass, in a harassment-heavy environment like downtown Athens? Athens is a college town, and this is why it makes complete sense to institute an ordinance that mandates all bar staff to be trained in sexual assault prevention in order to retain their liquor license. I feel unsafe and threatened in downtown Athens, and I'm disappointed that it has taken this long to, to discuss this ordinance and that it is being met with any resistance. How many individuals must become victims before this matter is taken seriously in our community? Putting bar staff through this training will contribute to a decrease in sexual assault and make the overall environment safer. It's important to me, and I hope that it's important to all of you. Thank you very much.
Emma, excuse me, I didn't get your last name.
It's Elrod, E-L-R-O-D.
Thank you.
And I'm in support of the, of Stephanie's argument. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, and good evening, everyone. My name is Devon Niqueo, and I'm a senior also at the University of Georgia. I'm an on-campus resident, and I live in the Health Science Res, Health Science Campus on Prince Avenue. I'd like to say thank you to you all. I know it's been a long night for listening to us because this is an issue that is very close to our heart and also to our community. I'd like to second the comments that Emma and Stephanie made. There is a great need for sexual assault prevention, and the students are prepared, prepared to create a culture of consent. This means not only getting a one-word answer, but also knowing that the answer is genuine and enthusiastic, knowing the right questions to ask your partner, and also knowing how to intervene as a third party. Just recently, we saw a story reported of a woman, who's, who's my age, I'm twenty-one years old, and she was unfortunately raped in her building by someone following her. And I wonder what the difference could have been if we had enough education and enough awareness about the issue of sexual assault. Unfortunately, even this woman was hesitant to speak up about her experience, and even though we all know that rape and sexual assault is a very prevalent, prevalent issue in our entire country, and Emma mentioned the statistics, it's still something that's very underreported and something that doesn't really have a lot of light shed on it. And we, as students and the rest of University of Georgia, we're prepared to make a true commitment to ensuring that there's more awareness brought to our university and to the community of Athens, since we aren't just UGA students, but we're Athens members as well. And so I made this flyer. Took me a long time and a lot of stress, but basically, I believe that it stresses the idea of the importance of effective and clear communication between people. Although I've never been sexually assaulted, I can't count the number of times I've been sexually harassed downtown, the number of times my friends have been sexually harassed, the number of times I've consoled someone after a threat or an incidence of sexual violence, or even the number of times I felt powerless to help someone in need. My heart breaks a little bit more every time I hear a story, and so I'm here on, I'm here tonight with my friends on behalf of people, on behalf of the stories that have been told and untold, imploring you all to help us make a difference with the ordinance that been brought, brought to your attention, so we can make Athens safer for everyone, UGA and Athens residents included. Thank you.
Devon, I'm sorry. Would you spell your last name for us? We put our names in the minutes.
No problem. My first name is D-E-V-O-N-N-A, last name Niqueo, N-I-C-K-E-O.
Thank you.
And I have this flyer for your records if you need.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bischburn, and I live at one-five-five Oak Tree Square, Athens, Georgia, three-zero-six-zero-six, and I was also coming to talk about the sexual assault prevention program that the other ladies were talking about. I am a mother of three children, and my oldest is a twelve-year-old girl who is eventually, maybe if we stay in town, going to be, you know, going downtown one of these years in the future. And even as an older community member, like in my mid-thirties, I still have people harassing me downtown, and hearing that there could be a training program so that bartenders and people who work at the establishments downtown that my friends and I like to frequent can be trained to recognize any potential problems, like if they see somebody following us or whatever, it would be really, really nice and comfortable to know that I have more than just my people with me watching my back, and also it would be helpful to know that I can, like, if I felt like it, I could go out for a night by myself and have some alone time, like, enjoying things that I like to do, which is going out to eat downtown or to coffee establishments, or even I do go out to bars with my friends still. So as a community member, I also would like to support the program.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bischburn.
Hi, my name is Moon Yang, and I want to speak on behalf of, or in support of the people that have spoken before me. I'm a student as well, and as we all know, rape and sexual assault are grossly mis, under-reported, and, you know, victims, they're afraid to speak up on these matters, and even the news story that we, or, you know, that I've seen on my news feed lately, it's just one of many instances where the victim was afraid to speak up, and it's a very preventable instance, you know? If we had these measures downtown, just raising awareness of these issues and having people just really be a part of stopping whatever's going on, I really believe that we can make a difference and make it more of a preventative measure rather than, you know, seeing a news story about, watch out for this man downtown because he attacked someone at the grill, you know? So I really believe that this ordinance would benefit the whole community and just make it safer for assault. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yang.
Good evening. Charles Mack, MACK. I have a mailing address, one-two-three Pearl Street, Athens, taxpayers, two pieces of property at Athens. I'm here to appeal to Mayor and Commission, Commissioners from a moral standpoint, because evidently, y'all don't give a darn about law when it comes to poor peoples and peoples of color. I refer to a letter that I sent you, March twentieth, two thousand and fifteen. Dear Ms. Denson and Commissioners, maybe I, I'm gonna do it this time, I'm gonna ask that this be part of the record. What do I need to do?
Just give it to Mr. Bearman there.
Okay, I want that to be part of the record, because I'm sure you, as Commissioners, don't know that you've been placed in a position to be sued for violations of civil rights, constitutional rights, and state rights. Okay? And I know Ms. Sally Yates up there at the Department of Justice. I haven't talked with her because I can't get beyond the doorkeepers. She's a graduate of the University of Georgia. Horn up there and Alana Deputy, Deputy Assistant, Attorney John. This is serious. Black lives matter. Black lives matter, and if this had happened to any one of you, I guarantee whoever was responsible would be in jail. God bless you.
Hey, y'all. Jesse Hool, PO Box four-forty-five. I wasn't originally going to speak tonight because I wanted to let the new voices speak for the issue for themselves, but I feel compelled, inspired by them. I can't thank you all enough for saying what you said. I didn't think it was gonna be this hard. So lots of people end up becoming statistics, and you hear about one in five women, one in sixteen men in college, and the number of people across their lifetime is much greater than that, it's much higher. So I'm one of those one in sixteen men. Wasn't here in Athens, was in Massachusetts, and I don't really think it's necessary to speak about what happened at that particular instance in front of you all tonight, but I did have the experience here in Athens at a, at a bar frequented by college students of getting drugged, and I'm not sure if I was the intended target or not, but I know that that bar, like many in our town, has a reputation for these sorts of instances among men and women, and I happened to be with and stay with friends who got me home safely, but many people don't have that same result. If you all don't think that there's a need in this town... I would encourage you to listen to the people who spoke tonight, who have done lots of research and have lots of resources that can explain how very effectively and very affordably you do have the power to build a culture of consent in this town. You do have the power to prevent people from becoming victims. We have institutions that help assist victims, but you all have the power to ease those institutions' burden. And I think the people who have stayed through this very long meeting, I appreciate that you all sit through these long meetings regularly, but the people who have stayed through this very long meeting are speaking on behalf of a much larger group of people, and I think that you all can and ought to serve those people as soon as you can. I also want to thank the six of you who replied to the questionnaire that our organization, Athens for Everyone, gave you. It speaks to a number of issues, including that one, and I would politely request that the four of you who have not yet found the time to reply to that, to please do so. Among the questions we asked of you is one about this issue, and I think it's very important. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Denson.
I want to say thank you to Athens Clark County. It's my hometown. I love this place, and I want to thank everybody who helped me put the Earth Day Parade and Festival together. Athens Clark County, I love you. You do the right thing as often as you can, and I support you all the way. Listen to what the people say. We get up here. We have passion. We understand what's happening out there in the environment, not just the global environment, but our local environment. And again, I just want to say thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, we're gonna come behind the rail, and we have our reports, and the first one is mine, and we have a highway proclamation from Dr. G's Creations, and they're going to keep Whitehead Road from Jefferson Road to Talisi Road picked up, and I appreciate that very much. And I'll say again, I hate that we have people that throw their trash out and somebody else has to pick it up, but I appreciate those that are willing to. And I have one appointment to make tonight, and that is District One Representative to our Splosh Oversight Committee, Grady Martin. And I believe that's all I have. Mr. Williams, do you have anything for us?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Bearman?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Maddox?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll start with you, Mr. Neesmith, and go around the room.
Well, you know, I really was moved by these young ladies tonight. You know, we talk about our problems downtown with drinking and bars and everything. Here's one we can do something about, and this culture of consent is a very real thing. There's been lots of studies and lots of tools out there, lots of training aids. First of all, to teach people what it means, what a sexual assault is, how to recognize it when you see it. And I hope maybe we can, Madam Mayor, we can seriously consider, if we're concerned about civil rights downtown, we should be concerned about sexual assault downtown. I hope we should consider looking at this, an ordinance like that.
Well, this is the first I've heard of it.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
So I'm not, I'm not even totally sure exactly what we're being asked, but we'll learn about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have much tonight, but I did want to point out something in the contract's awards in excess of $10,000, and it looks like we're moving ahead with the grant that Chief Freeman asked for a while back with the, if I'm not mistaken, on what this is for. It's with a contract with the Carl Vinson Institute to do some research for jail diversion for individuals' mental illness, and so it looks like we're moving forward on it, and it's appreciated. It's appreciated that our Police Department takes the lead on that, too. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Bell?
Good night.
Good night. Mr. Barrett?
Buenos noches.
I do have a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to go on the record, because I've asked now three times for Tim Denson with Athens for Everyone to make sure that he changes the link from my Facebook page that's on the response to the survey to my election, my election Facebook page, not my personal page, so I would like for that to finally be done. If they would please, I have children, I'd prefer that you use my election page, that's what it's there for, it's Sharon for Athens Facebook pages. The second thing is, I wanted to thank Mary Quinn publicly for her service on the Splosh Oversight Committee. She's now councilperson of Winterville, so that's why she had to step down, and Grady Martin for agreeing to serve again in that role. Also want to thank Chief Freeman and Officer Kelly, the officer that was involved in the shooting, and I appreciate Manager's Office getting us information as soon as that happened, because there was a lot of stuff, a lot of activity on my side of town. I assume Andy got a lot out of it, too. And the final thing I'd like to ask is for, we've had, we had a really good meeting last Wednesday, the 27th, at the landfill with some citizens and area residents, including a church member that attended the presentation on odor management, and of course, there's a whole bunch of stuff discussed at that meeting. I think it was a really transparent way for our staff to address the issues. They were very forthcoming with information, provided all sorts of information to the residents there. There were several questions answered, you know, asked and answered. And, you know, for the record, I'd like to go on the record asking that anybody that believes that they have proof of contamination, that they provide that, is their responsibility as a citizen to provide that, but they also provide it with a chain of custody that is required in order for us to look at that. And then also mention that, I believe we had a speaker tonight that mentioned the lab results have not been provided to her. Those were provided that evening to our citizens, and they are readily available upon request, and anybody can ask for that, including Mayor and Commission. And finally, I'd like to ask for the respect of my Commissioners that they would allow me, as District One Rep., to handle any of this, most of these issues. I think by interacting with certain individuals that are not area residents of that area, that we tend to perpetuate issues that aren't really there. So if there are any questions, I hope those Commissioners will speak with me about it and/or staff. So that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Sims?
I have a request from a citizen on, at 223 Fabius Street. They would like to request the removal of the yellow curb in front of their home. They said they might want to have guests, it's getting to be summertime, and they might like to be out there. And also, could we look at maybe possibility of signing LRC, a look? I know we have overgrown growth is coming up, as they say, spring has sprung, and I've had several requests about overgrown lots, and maybe we could have our attorney look at the possibility of ordinances in other communities that, because that's generally one of the ones that's very difficult for us to enforce, so, but maybe we could have, take a look at some ordinances in other places if they are being enforced, that we might be able to model something after so that co-compliance can basically stop telling people, "Well, we'd like to do something, but we can't do anything." So maybe this might help us.
Mr. Sims, because of the time of the year and person cuts my yard was two days late and seeing how fast things grow, I think I'll go ahead and put that in LRC tonight. It got cut yesterday, so tremendous improvement. Mr. Gerson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two items tonight, both in some form or fashion, kind of responses to some questions and concerns raised at the podium. I think many members of the public know that we, both on the staff and elected official side, intend to perform a health and safety study of our downtown realm, and I'd be very interested in seeing how assault prevention could be part of that in a series of outcomes. Just in the couple of minutes that speakers were at the podium, I saw that the University of North Carolina has a training regimen on which they collaborate with some area bars, and I know in my day job on the public education side, you know, we often have a series of required regimens that we put our staff members through, you know, through some online portals, and so a model like that seems like a reasonable conduit for training. On the set of concerns raised by folks in the Hancock area, I did want to make a couple of points. I looked at our most recent round of CDBG allocations, and there are two allocations to organizations that specifically repair homes of the kind those residents are in. The Athens Heritage Foundation had about a $40,000 allocation for that kind of activity, and Action Incorporated had about a $160,000 allocation. So I want the public to know that we're putting funds toward those kind of repairs. And I've also had some conversations with people who've been in the preliminary discussions around whatever the future of that corridor and really, you know, you think broadly of the area between Broad and Baxter could be in the forthcoming sense, and from the probably three conversations I've had with those institutional partners concerned about what we could do in the area, everyone has said that that single-family neighborhood really is the jewel of the area, and every intention is to ensure that people be able to retain control of their single-family homes. And so I wanted to make very publicly clear that I've heard no expression of intent to eliminate the opportunity for people to continue to live in their homes in that area.
Thank you. Ms. Lang?
I'd like to address the Hancock Corridor issues, too. I've met with Alvin to discuss, you know, possibly reaching out to other agencies who do work in the area to come up with programs that would meet the needs of folks in that area, you know, particularly reaching out to the Homeless and Poverty Coalition, as well as folks like the Heritage Foundation, the Land Trust, Action, to maybe have some conversation and bring people to the table to come up with a way they can all work together to meet some of the needs that are being unmet. And I hope that we can talk about a property tax breaks, especially for low-income seniors. You know, I know several elderly ladies in the area that feel like they are being taxed out of their homes, and I know people in my neighborhood who feel the same way, and myself included sometimes. So, and I have been working with the Heritage Foundation, too, and hoping to look at some, you know, possibilities for historic designation of portions of that corridor, because it's undeniably historic, and it's a place, it's a really special place in this town, and we need to protect it, and, you know, this pace of development in this community, we have a hard time getting ahead of that ball. And I want to address the sexual assault issue. It's a real issue. I have conversations regularly, particularly with younger women, and it is definitely an issue. I've been out on the town, and I've seen firsthand really dangerous situations that I have no idea how they end up. You know, you have no idea what happens when those girls make their way home at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning and the condition they're in, and I witnessed some harassing behavior, certainly. It's definitely a problem. It's a cultural problem, but there are things we could do by, you know, implementing training, mandating training attached to our liquor licenses. And I did express during our budget meeting with management, you know, we will be raising liquor license fees this year, and I hope that we can have a broader conversation about our liquor licensing, you know, maybe creating new categories to better kind of guide the kinds of establishments we have downtown as well. It seems like the vast majority of these institutions are just about liquor. There's no entertainment, there's no pool tables, there's no dartboards, so I think we can, you know, better guide the actual use of our businesses downtown and appeal to a more diverse audience and encourage safer behavior. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lang.
I do have a couple of things, so I know I'm the last one. I'm getting out of here, but I'll make this quick. I think we all are, none of us are naive to the issues of sexual battery and rape. I think in the last week, I think we should all be very aware in a split second, lives are lost and people's lives are changed forever, so that's not something I'm going to get into because I can't really talk about it. What I do want to talk about is I want to thank the public and the support and confidence for my work as a District Board Commissioner, and that on May 24th, that I will not have an opponent. I really appreciate that. I like, especially with the packets and the amount of work that we have, it's nice for us, I think, all of us having no opposition, to be able to stay focused on the work at hand, and I think that, I just wanted to thank the public for that. The other thing, I just wanted to say that my, wearing my game-winning Clark Central soccer shirt and my good luck necklace and earrings did work tonight, and that the 5A Region 8 Clark Central Men's Soccer Team went from Sweet 16 at home tonight to the Elite 8 in the state tournament. So I just wanted to say that it worked, and next Tuesday will be the next game, and I say adjourn.
Congratulations, soccer mom.